I'd like to call to order the November 9th meeting of the Fall River School Committee. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Here.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Har?
Here.
Mr. Hetzler?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Larrabee?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. I'd like to identify Mr. Hart and Mr. Hetzler are joining us by Zoom. Salute to the flag, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice. What's your name, Mark? We're also joined tonight by a student delegate from Derby. What's your name, young lady? Hello?
Hi, my name is Charlotte Misterato.
All right, we'll call you up in a few minutes. Thanks.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed to be acknowledged and permissible. Citizens input, Deb?
There's no one signed up.
Recognition awards, item number three. We have none tonight. The superintendent's report will delay a little bit.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I thought we had recognitions. I think the superintendent was going to recognize. I don't see it on the agenda, but I thought there were two students. I think there were two students that he was going to recognize this evening. It could be an error, but I do see the superintendent.
Well, we can always let the student comment first go first. All right, we're going to put the student recognition awards and the student comment after. Right now is the student comment, and then we'll go to the superintendent's report with the recognition awards.
This is number 11. Superintendent's awards is the number 11 under the committee of the whole.
Number 11, okay. He said number 11.
Just make a motion then to bring that forward so we can excuse the individuals being recognized.
All right, let's just go right back on order. Next item up is the superintendent's report.
So, tonight, I'm starting my report with the update on where we are with construction. So, I want to, Ken's in the back, but I mean, sometimes we don't take into account how much work him and his team are doing. I want to thank them for everything that they do. At Derby, if you guys have been by, if you saw on Friday, the media attention that Matt Damaris gave with the tour from the local newspaper in News in Providence, you could see all the work that's being done. The pool is now being painted. We're in the final stages before we complete the pool vessel itself. The gym floor, we just tweeted out some photos today, is being prepared. The track has been painted, the court is done. It's taking shape. The locker room renovations are ongoing. Electrical turnover, the new system has been completed. The main building work is following from a south to north pattern with painting and whiteboard installation progressing each day. So each day if you go, you'll see that rooms are being completed as they go from south to north. Ceramic tile on the walls is being installed. The abatement to the exterior of the fieldhouse continues. You can see the metal stud framing, but you can also see our mock-up of the hottie board installation on the north side of the fieldhouse. The front entrance, exterior stairs, the whole envelope, if you will, has been poured. The interior main stairwells are being fabricated. And as you can see into the entrance into the fieldhouse, the glass now has been installed. The boiler plant for the main building is taking shape, and we will be ready to supply heat to the building within the next few weeks. Each day, there are 248 construction workers on site, so you get a scope of how big that project is. Watson, if you haven't driven by Watson or gone to visit, you got to see what we're doing. Eighty percent of the window lintels have been demoed. If you don't know what a lintel is, it's the space horizontally between two rising or existing, we'll use beams as a better term, but it provides the support above a window or any sort of frame. Forty-three percent of the new lintels have been installed. Their windows have arrived, they're on site. People say, oh, you know, we haven't had windows that open in many, many years. They're actually on site, we're waiting to install them. The ones in the basement have already been installed. The boiler startup was successful. Inspections of that boiler have been completed. The contractor is working 12 hours on Wednesdays and Saturdays when kids aren't there. On Wednesdays, the teachers actually come here to cuss and work here, which is, I want to thank them for their flexibility and esprit de corps. At RPA, the temporary heating units have been installed. The boiler installation is complete. The punch list items are being completed. The new entrance and receiving areas are receiving finishing touches, and the roofs are completed and flashing is being installed. The new roof drain receptors have also been piped in. And then finally, at Westall, so we have four major MSBA projects we want. I know we built a lot of schools back in the day, but with this new green repairs program, it's pretty exciting to see how many we're doing it. Westall, the roof's been installed and is complete. The access hatch is operational. The boilers have been installed, they're inspected, they're operational. We're finishing the punch list items, but most importantly, if you go visit Stone, even if you just walk by, I walked by today and saw a beautiful tree I had to take a photo of, it was so beautiful for fall. But the playground, the basketball court, first time ever having a basketball court at Stone, it's the one thing those kids have been asking me for every single visit I've been there. I'm very happy that Ken and his team, that work is underway. We just got to complete the painting of the court, and it'll all be completed before winter break. So very exciting work going on in Capitol facilities. Want to thank again Ken and his crew for all that work. I believe that's all I have under my update. There's many other items here that I look forward to discussing with the committee tonight, and my team will stand ready to answer any questions during the course of the meeting that my, that my team will be able to answer from the members of the school committee. So with that, I thank you, and I'm ready.
Number five, a student comment. Is she there?
It's Sulee.
She is, Paul, but she probably doesn't. Mr. Chairman, just a point of information. This is the first meeting the student delegates are joining us, so I think there's a little
A little trouble at the Zoom, yeah?
Little bit of trouble understanding sort of what the role is.
Is Zooming here?
I could certainly reach out to them, you're on.
We could try to get her a little bit later, we can go, we can bring her back in a minute.
She's on.
We'll bring her back in a minute. Right now, I'd like to move to item number six. Approval of minutes. There are no minutes now. Approval of travel requests, there are no travel requests. Donations, item number eight. Superintendent Malone, on behalf of the Fall River Public Schools, requests acceptance of PPE, 750 full-face mask shields, 10,000 blue disposable masks, and 1,000 assorted fabric masks. A donation from State Representative Carol Fiola in Clearview. This will be used across the district. Matt, you want to comment?
Thank you, State Rep. Fiola and Clearview Corporation for the dropping off of all those items, and we have them, and we've been handing them out. Thank you.
Motion to accept.
I have a motion to accept.
Second.
Second.
I'll call the roll, Deb, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. One more time on the student report. Is Sulee there? Okay, we'll move on. When she comes in, we'll let her speak. Approval of contracts. We have a number of contracts tonight. Item nine on your agenda. Do I have a motion or any questions about any specific contracts?
South Coast Collaborative.
All right, so we'll take everyone but the South Coast Collaborative for Mr. Aguirre. Can I get a motion on the rest of the contracts?
Motion to approve contracts other than the Mr. Aguirre's South Coast Collaborative.
Second. Second, I have a motion and a second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Well, call the roll on those and go back to Mr. Aguirre's. Deb, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes, Mr. Aguirre, South Coast Collaborative.
My question on this is, maybe it was said and I missed it, but I recall at a meeting of the gentlemen, we were supposed to join the collaborative that was going to get us a 10 or 15 percent reduction in tuition. Is this full, that we didn't get any deduction?
No, we did not end up actually joining the collaborative. We didn't really align on their processes for the board membership, so we didn't end up joining, so there would be no reduction in tuition.
What was it supposed to be? How much was the percentage supposed to be?
Member districts, it's either 5 or 10 percent, somewhere in that range. I don't know what, I have to look back in the.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I think if I recall, we never really got a good explanation as far as why we were not in it. But to me, when I see this number, if I say 10 percent of that, it's almost $200,000. So maybe we could get a report from you or the superintendent to just explain why, but to me, joining an organization to save $200,000 is worth it. So, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, it's just that I think we need to get a better explanation of why we didn't.
Superintendent Malone? Oh, Mr. Aguirre, do you yield?
Yeah, I'm just looking for the answer.
Mr. Malone?
I'll give him an answer, there's no need to write a report. We negotiated that the assistant superintendent would serve on their board. They're an organization that requires a superintendent to serve on their board, and they took that up to their membership, it went to the state, the state didn't approve it, so we didn't join. And I'm not sitting on their board.
So that cost us $170,000?
We negotiated, we thought we had a deal, and it didn't go through. So we joined the other organization. This organization still serves many of our kids. They're a partner, we work with them closely, we're just not a member of their board.
So for the sake of you serving on their board, it would have saved us $170,000?
Likely.
Yep. I'll speak for myself, to me, that's something that we should have, we should have talked about a little further because, quite frankly, $170,000 is too much to leave on the table unless there's more to it, other than the superintendent having to serve on the committee. Just speaking for myself, my opinion is we should be able to save.
Why don't you refer to the Sped Subcommittee for discussion there, Kevin?
Okay, I'll make a motion to refer it to the Special Ed Subcommittee.
Second.
Any discussion on referring it to the Sped Subcommittee? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Mr. Hart?
I voted yes.
Okay. On the motion to approve the South Coast Educational Collaborative, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Hey, Paul. Just keep going, Deb.
Mr. Hetzler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes, Mr. Hart?
I voted yes.
Okay. On the motion to approve the South Coast Educational Collaborative, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just a point of order.
Go ahead, please.
I don't know who made the motion, I think we need one of those first. So I'll make the motion. We didn't have a motion on the table for that piece, sir.
We have a motion, the second is who? Mr. Hart?
Mr. Hart. Second motion.
Okay. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yeah.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. We have two grants tonight. I'm looking for a motion to approve the Target Assistance Grant and the Early College Support Grant.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on the two grants? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Did our student representative log in yet? Sulee, are you there? Okay. Committee of the whole, 11.1. President, please.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now, Sulee. Go ahead, give us the student report, please.
It's just like introducing my contact.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of information. The student delegates, this is their first meeting, they don't understand their role as it is just yet. This is their first meeting. They were told just to introduce themselves to the committee because it was their first meeting. It is a little bit difficult seeing as they are virtual tonight, but if it's okay with the committee, I'll reach out to them, as I usually do with the delegates, and I'll inform them going forward of what the role of student delegate is and their ability to participate in a meeting and to share information about what's going on, not only at the school but in the district, if that's okay with the committee.
That's fine. I just, did Sulee have anything to add tonight, or just want to introduce yourself?
No, I do not have anything to add tonight, but my name is Sulee, and I'm a junior that attends Derby High School.
Okay, welcome aboard, thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay, Committee of the whole, 11. Presentation by Superintendent Malone of the Mass Academic Excellence Awards. Dr. Malone?
Yes, so each, each year at this time, my association provides academic excellence awards to students across Massachusetts based on district size, how many, how big the high school is determines how many we receive. We're blessed that because of the size of Derby, we have three Super academic excellence awards that we provide. Each year, what we do is we talk to Derby High School, their leadership team pulls together their, their top three students. This year, in order, I'll provide some, some statements, some commentary, and an award to each of the top three. It's a little awkward this year given how, how we're doing this, but I hope to be able to, later in the year, to either say something more at graduation or at another award ceremony. This is a very important award. It goes on your resume and your college applications, and it's because of your effort and commitment over the period of time. So I'm going to actually go backwards, I'm going to start with the third student in the class. So this is third in the class, ranked third in the class. Imagine what that means of about approximately 580, 550 students being number three in the class. The first award is to Alicia Gonzalez. Alicia's currently ranked number three in her class. She's actively involved in National Honor Society, Upward Bound, Indoor and Outdoor Track and Field, where she won first place in the D1 shot put relay in Diocesan Youth Council. Alicia has completed a dual enrollment class at Bristol Community College, is in her last year for Project Lead the Way Engineering Track. She has a passion for engineering and would like to pursue a career in biomedical engineering. Last year, she and two other students from Derby won first prize in underwater robotics sea perch competition, and would have attended nationals if COVID-19 did not conclude the year. She was awarded the Brown University Book Award, and last spring, she received the Mass Maritime Women in STEM Award. She has recently applied to Georgia Institute of Technology, Worcester Polytechnic Institute, Northeastern Rensselaer Polytech Institute, UMass Dartmouth, UMass Amherst, and Johnson and Wills. She hopes to study biomedical engineering. We all are very proud of her accomplishments at Derby and the Fall River Public Schools, and please join me in congratulating Alicia Gonzalez for this award. If you can just stay, because I'm going to take a photo, I have to clean that up. I feel weird. I'm going to come up there and read it. I hate reading with my back here. All right, the second award. Tonight goes to Sophie McDonald. She is number two in the class. She is bright, focused, caring, and motivated. These are just a few words to describe Sophie McDonald. Academically, she's taken some of the most challenging courses that Derby High School offers, and is currently ranked the number-two student in senior class. By the end of this school year, Sophie will have completed 10 advanced placement courses in addition to several dual enrollment courses. On top of her academics, she is also a strong contributor to the Fall River community. She has taken pride in being a member of several clubs, sports teams, and leadership positions at Derby High School, such as president of the National Honor Society, president of the Spanish Club, and president of the Ski Club. Sophie has also received several athletic recognitions, including Herald News Allscholastic Girls Volleyball All-Star, Southeast Conference Girls Volleyball All-Star, and Girls Varsity Volleyball Most Valuable Player. Disciplined issue, has worked as a CNA, dietary aide, tutor, and most recently is interning as a cognitive therapist intern. Sophie truly represents the student who seizes each day and works hard for all of her achievements. Her participation in AP and dual enrollment courses represent her academic drive and thoughtful planning towards her career goals of becoming a registered nurse. She plans on applying to several colleges, including Northeastern University, UMass, Amherst, Boston College, Brown University, Harvard College, UConn, Mass College of Pharmaceutical, how do I say that right?
College of Pharmacy and Health Sciences.
Mass College of Pharmacy and Health Sciences, John Hopkins University, and the University of Pennsylvania. Please join me in welcoming and congratulating Sophie for her amazing accomplishment. Congratulations. We're going to do one more, one more to do. The final award that we give is, will be virtual, and Charlotte is on, see on the, she is waving at us, on the screen. Charlotte Misterato is number one in her class, class of 2021. Charlotte is an impressive young woman who has accomplished a tremendous amount, both inside and outside of the classroom, as a hilltopper. Her dedication to maintaining academic excellence while being a pillar in our community is truly remarkable. Over the course of her time at Derby, she has challenged herself to over 10 AP courses and has excelled in all of them. Her teachers describe her as someone who regularly produces top-notch schoolwork and shows a deep understanding of difficult material. She actively participates in extracurricular activities and genuinely, and genuinely goes out of her way to be a good and kind person. These characteristics would make her a wonderful student in any normal academic year, but given the current situation we are living and learning through this year, it shows that she is truly special and deserving of recognition. Charlotte has been part of the Derby Girls Varsity Soccer Program since she was a freshman, playing the forward position and occasionally the midfield position. She is development and a natural leader for the program. With her experience, she demonstrates the meaning of dedication, no matter the circumstances at hand. Currently, in her senior year, she is one of three captains that leads and represents the program to all that we, all those we face. Charlotte represents the true student athlete, hardworking in the classroom and on the field. This year, she is also an MIAA ambassador. In her spare time, Charlotte also volunteers for the Red Cross and has recently started tutoring through Derby's Learn to Serve Program. She plans on applying to Providence College, NYU, UMass Dartmouth, URI, Boston College, Boston University, Harvard, and Brown, and hopes to pursue a major in health sciences, focusing specifically on medicine. This is our number-one performing student in our class, and we thank and honor Charlotte Misterato for her accomplishments. Please join me. Yeah, I wanted the school committee, I mean, actually, maybe, because you can't, you can't get around them. If you guys could just come up and stand in front, I'll get a photo and get the whole school committee behind you. I'll do it that way. Yeah, all right. She's going to stand right here, and he's got a wide camera angle, so he'll get everyone. If we could just stand, but spread out a little bit, we're all going to face that. Yeah, I had it upside down.
I think you could have sent in some more AP classes, girls.
Thank you. All right.
Congratulations, ladies.
Thank you for everything. I wish we, we'll do this again another point. The year gets better, and we're able to say more than that. You girls are rocking it, all right? Difficult situation this year at school, very best, difficult situation. Guys, awesome, like, God bless you. All right. High tech.
Excellent job, ladies. Make the district very proud.
Item number 11.2 is a presentation and discussion on the turnaround plans from Fonzie Co., Watson, and Talbot, as presented by Principals Leacy, Celeste Hoag, and Brian Repose. I suggest we take them in the order, they're right on the agenda, and call up Fonzie, Principal Leacy first.
Principal Leacy first?
Principal Leacy first. Oh, go ahead. Brian, Brian, go ahead.
Talbot's first, yeah, Talbot's.
Doesn't matter what order.
Talbot's first.
Yeah.
With their noses as big as mine in Dubai.
On here, Talbot's first.
Yeah, here, it's Fonzie Co. Fonzie Co, Watson.
Hi, good evening. Brian Repose from Talbot. Appreciate the opportunity to be here and just tell you a little bit about Talbot's turnaround priorities. As you know, I shared a one-pager with you in advance of the meeting. I can sort of focus on the turnaround timeline, that table in the middle, and then some of those bullet points towards the bottom. So, just to recap, timeline, for Talbot in 1819, we engaged in a school redesign process, and we were awarded an SRG grant after submitting our application. And so last year really was year one of the implementation of that turnaround plan. This would be year two, and next year would be the third year. In terms of the focus, the table in the middle, this is sort of how we have messaged the priorities to our staff, and so there's three categories each year. So for this year, as an example, the, there's, the first category is just building buy-in and developing capacity. So our focus around trauma-sensitive practices is that we're just building some buy-in, developing some initial capacity in that area. You'll see in the middle, those priorities, we're doing with a little bit more fidelity, we're pilot testing those pieces. And then our expectation across the school for this year is those two bullet points to the right, so standards-based units and well-structured lessons, and then maximizing out-of-school academic and social-emotional support. In terms of what's, sorry, in terms of what's different, this year, we have an advisory model every single day for all students regardless of cohort, so they start their day in an advisory. We're actually utilizing this time to teach students some, hot up map out their week, especially given this dynamic where students could be hybrid. We're spending some time on Monday, actually teaching kids Google tasks to do. We're spending some time on Monday actually teaching kids Google tasks to do what work is still outstanding, framing out their week. And then the rest of those blocks are what I need blocks for the week. So they might be doing some work, they could be an eye-ready on their individual pathway based on their diagnostic data. And then on Wednesdays, we're reserving that for our Choose Love curriculum, and that's across the district. We're also still working with the Inclusive Practice Academy through DESI. So we have 20 coaching visits this year. Of course, those are virtual, but we're still have that partnership ongoing. We do have some curricular autonomy with ELA, in particular to introduce some more diverse culturally-responsive text to our students. We're still moving forward with our out-of-school programming for Coaching for Change and 21st Century, although that has to look and feel a bit different. And then, as you know, we have our Verizon Innovative Learning Grant, which has provided one-to-one Chromebooks for all students. We've also increased our services and supports this year for English learners, and we've improved programming and really streamlined programming for our sub-separate populations at Talbot. So I can answer any specific questions you may have.
Mr. Costin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Reposa, welcome. So you have your SRG grant, and given sort of the limitations with some of these onsite visits, I mean, you mentioned they're virtual. Was there any discussion with DESI regarding changing the timeline? I mean, obviously, the work still needs to continue. However, those supports, to me, seem like they're best suited, in some cases, in person than they would be virtual. And I know we have to work within the confines that we have, and if virtual's all they're offering, then that's a challenge, I guess, at best. But I want to see Talbot get the most benefit out of the SRG grant in terms of that support that they are... I don't want to say require, I guess it's required to support for districts or schools like Talbot. And so I just had a question, whether or not that conversation has been had, if that's something that they'll understand that, listen, virtual's okay, but we may need to continue on with the in-person support even though it may occur in this year, going forward once. And my hope is that we will get back to a situation where students will be in school and that we'll resume some sense of normal...
Sure.
...in our day-to-day educational setting. So I was just curious. I mean, if not, if virtual's what they're going to provide, I just don't know if... Or whether, and I don't want to put you on the spot, with how comfortable you are speaking to sort of the challenges of getting that coaching virtual as opposed to if they were boots on the ground in the school building, watching, observing what's going on, and providing that feedback to you and your team.
Sure. Yeah, so DESI, we do have actually an interview with them on Friday, and that's a follow-up interview to our Sustainable Improvement Plan. I have not received any, like, specific messaging or communication around what the timelines look like or what the targets look like just yet. In terms of the support, though, DESI's real role with Talbot is more of a monitoring role. I know that we've previously had monitoring site visits. I don't know what those will look like this year. Those have always been in person, and then they'll provide us with a pretty comprehensive report. Some of those pieces could be done remotely in the sense like there's a component where they review documents and data. But the in-person observations and meeting with teams, that might be challenging, and it might look different. But that's DESI's primary role with Talbot. Having said that, all the strategy pieces in our plan, we have had to modify things a little bit given this dynamic of kids across cohorts. So as an example, if we're going through and doing observations, some of those observations are going to have to look remote, right, in classroom settings. Some of our partners, like the Inclusive Practice Academy, we have 20 visits. Previously, those would be done in person, and they might be sitting at a planning meeting. Now those are going to have to be done remotely. So we're going to work with them to provide the best experience possible, but, you know, to your point, I think, you know, we're still... It's unclear what the MSV process will look like. I don't know what that looks like yet. And I'm hoping, based on our interview on Friday with DESI, that maybe we get some additional information from them.
I just think that the clock doesn't stop on your turnaround work.
Right.
Nor should it. I mean, we've got time-sensitive work that needs to be done there. I'm just saying that I don't know how fair it would be in year 2022, at the end of year three, when they say, well, Talbot, we're going to, you know, sort of, it looks like you're... Maybe you're still struggling. Maybe they want to look at, you know, continuing with the turnaround work there. And I just think that things are unique now, and I'm not so sure that DESI has provided sort of the alternative or an answer as to how they're going to address schools like ours...
Right.
...that are in this process where the clock is still running. And sort of, I don't want Talbot to get cheated on the backside. I know they're there for monitoring, but school looks entirely different this year and may continue to look different next year.
Absolutely, yep.
And I just want some understanding or some feedback from them as to how they are sort of processing that and their determination as to whether or not Talbot's turning itself around and getting back on track. I know that your staff are probably doing their work, but how does that connect, if you will? So if you do get that answer, or if those questions do come up, if you can just share it, I'm sure it'll come through the superintendent. It can be on a Friday memo or something. I don't need an elaborate report. I just think that the clock is still running, and so what is that work going to look like? And how much weight are they going to give their monitoring in a situation where... And I don't have the percentages, I think I have it in my folder here, of how many students are remote in your schools.
Forty-three percent, forty-three percent for us.
You know, so almost half of your students are remote, and so how do they monitor what's going on there when almost half your population is remote?
Right. I know that's something, certainly, that's one of my questions for Friday for our interview with them, in addition to a lot of the modified benchmarks, because, for instance, the work we were doing last year, you know, when we moved, you know, for COVID-19 closure and moved to fully remote.
Right.
Obviously, we had to suspend some of that work because in that, we were responding to the pandemic, you know, and that was the most needed thing in front of us at the moment. So we definitely have to modify some of the plans. So we'll see what they see, what they say. Hopefully, they'll have some additional guidance on Friday.
Okay. With that, I yield, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Reposa.
Mr. Corey?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just as a quick follow-up to the vice chair's comments on DESI, I see this looks like a really great turnaround plan, redesigned plan. It's useful, it's up to date, and I would invite DESI to come down and see it in action on any given day, be happy to chauffeur them or, you know, walk them through the school to see, you know, exactly what we're dealing with here in Fall River. That being said, I just have a couple of questions for you, Brian, just out of curiosity. I look at culturally diverse curriculum in ELA, and then I look at culturally responsive teaching. Could you just give me an idea what that looks like?
Sure, absolutely, yes. So one of our areas of focus at Talbot has been culturally responsive teaching. And so it's really about understanding where our students are coming from and how to design curriculum that's accessible for all students, and really seeing someone's background and culture as an asset, right? So really shifting our language to be more strengths-based and asset-based as a school. And so we've done a lot of work. We started last year digging into this work, and we did a book study. We're actually continuing, we're going deeper, so it's not like we're necessarily shifting gears. We're staying the course with this work this year, and we've really gotten into, we've started to do some work around implicit bias, looking at our systems, practices, policies as a school. For instance, you know, let's say we're analyzing attendance data or conduct data. Who are these students that maybe are having attendance issues? Who are these students that are maybe having conduct issues, right? So really closely analyzing those systems. And then in terms of curriculum, it's important for us as a school, as we were engaging in a lot of our planning work for turnaround, that we're using text that's representative of the population that we're serving. And it presents students in that population in a positive light, right? So as protagonists in text. So we had to really think about, you know, how are we positioning books kids are reading that are engaging and that are representative of kids that look like them or maybe have experiences like them? So that has been important for us, and our team has done an awesome job with...
You see the kids responding in kind?
Absolutely, yeah. Last year, we actually piloted some units of study in ELA, and we saw much higher levels of engagement with kids willing to engage in the text because some of the topics were topics that were really, you know, on the front of their mind.
That's great. And as far as increased supports for the English-language learners?
Yep. So this year, we've actually restructured our schedule. We do have an additional FTE of an ESL teacher. As you know, Talbot was the only school for foundational programming.
Yeah.
Currently, we're piloting now for this year a sixth-grade foundational strand at Morton and Cuss, which really, from an equity standpoint, is the way things should be, right? So we've had now, Talbot still has sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Now the two other middle schools are actually piloting with a strand in their sixth grade as well for their neighborhood, for students, you know, that are in that neighborhood school. So we've actually been able to, with our staffing, provide the required two hours of ESL instruction to all of our English learners. And then we have supports with, through ESL Paris and instructional support liaisons as well to check in with kids. For instance, now, we've actually created a schedule to support kids that are at home because we have foundational learners that are Cohort B, fully remote. And then we also have kids that are mainstream, that are not foundational, that are also fully remote. So we've had to maximize our support staffs that we're checking in with those kids that are at home as well.
Yeah, this is a different year, but I was thinking about the model in general, you know? And I'm glad that we have another FTE there. I always want you to keep us aware as to what those fluctuating needs may be moving into the future. And one last quick thing, student discourse, is that the way the kids are talking to each other on campus, campus culture, that kind of thing?
So, yeah, it's really around building kids' capacity just to engage in academic conversations, right? Whether it's about text, whether it's about math, whether it's about science. So particularly in a school where there's a focus on language because we serve so many English learners, it's important that kids are talking all day and writing all day because that's how we improve with language. That's just one of the areas of focus in our turnaround plan as well.
Thank you very much. I yield.
No problem.
Just one question, just to...
Yes, sir.
At the bottom, it says, reassign of a behavior therapist.
Yes.
What was that, just, you're using them differently now that you lost one?
Exactly, yes. So now I have, at Talbot, we actually have two sub... We have four sub-separate classrooms in total. Two of those are language-based programming, and two of them are social-emotional. And so what we've done is I've actually reassigned my behavior therapist to service as a support to those four classrooms throughout the day. And so now they can be much more proactive. So as an example, he's running groups throughout the day, you know, in conjunction with the teachers in Paris in those rooms. We also have a dynamic because some of the students are fully remote. Most of them are in person, but we have some that are fully remote, and so he's actually had to do like a remote check-in group as well and then also work with students that are in person.
What were they doing last year, the whole school?
He was primarily, he was actually primarily focused in grade six, which was an area of need just in our data around conduct, and then also primarily English learner because he speaks three languages. So his primary responsibility was there. We do have, though, students who are English learners that are also sub-separate, so that language capacity is super useful, and he can be much more proactive in this role. So we're trying to shift from responding to need to, you know, being a little bit more proactive.
Makes sense. Thank you. I yield.
Yep.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chairperson. Hi, Mr. Reposo.
Hi.
My colleague already asked one question. I had two for you, the ELA.
Sure.
So thank you for answering that and giving me my answers for that. But as far as the utilized trauma-sensitive practices and the developed capacity, currently, what are you practicing at Talbot SEL-wise, and how do you plan to integrate more of the SEL throughout the day, like you mentioned?
Yeah, it's a great question. So we're implementing the district-wide Choose Love curriculum that all of the schools are. What we're really trying to communicate with our staff, and we've been working on for a couple of years, is that social-emotional learning doesn't live inside of one block, right? So we're doing a lot of work just around teacher language, right? How to maybe de-escalate students, right? That sort of thing. We're actually, last year, we worked closely with Charlie Applestein, who's a social worker that's come in and done a lot of work in the district, and his whole approach is around the use of positive language, strengths-based language with kids. What we're doing this year to add on to what we've done is I'm actually sending my school adjustment counselors to some additional professional development, and then what they'll do is they'll come back and facilitate some PD for my staff. And that's specific to anxiety right now. So we know all the latest research is showing that kids with anxiety, it's manifesting like it's ADHD, and, you know, and we have a lot of students who are anxious for a variety of reasons, even more so with the pandemic. And so they'll come back and actually provide training to our staff once they attend. So we're just sort of building on a lot of the work that we've already started there.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anything further? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Next up is Fonseca. Alicia.
Good evening. I just wanted to check to see if anyone had received an updated version, just a little bit more detailed. It has the Fonseca vision statement at the top. Does everyone have a copy of that? It was sent out this afternoon.
Thank you.
I think it came through email.
On the desk.
I think it came through email.
Okay, excellent. All right, so thank you for having me here today. It's been a couple of years since I was brought before the committee to speak about the turnaround work at Fonseca. And it's been a journey for sure, but I do have to say that, you know, despite the struggles that we are facing right now with the pandemic, I do see that the Fonseca family is really continuing to move forward with sticking to the initiatives and the strategies that have really helped us throughout the last couple of years of turnaround. And so I wanted to highlight some of those and then kind of discuss a little bit about what we're going to be doing in the future. So Fonseca began its turnaround journey in 2016 and '17, and since then, there has been a significant staff turnover. And with that came a lot of opportunity for professional development and staff growth, as well as the staff coming together to really develop its own vision of teaching and learning for the students at Fonseca. And so as a part of our turnaround journey in 2019, 2020 school year, we came together as a school to develop our own vision and mission statement that we truly felt aligned to what our vision was for the students at Fonseca and as a new staff. Some of the supports and priorities that we put in place really were focused around the data that we were looking at and analyzing from a year-to-year basis. Initially, we were looking at district benchmarks as well as MCAS data, but through the turnaround process, we've been collaborating with Achievement Network. And with Achievement Network, we've also been able to utilize their resources and materials for both formative and summative assessments throughout the year and check-ins. We've also received some academic coaching with them, and so they were able to help us align our professional development, our PLT time where our teachers are collaborating, to really drive home what our academic and social-emotional priorities were. And so to comprehend complex text, that has been sort of, I would say, the main focus at Fonseca because we need to get our children learning to read and understanding what it is that they're reading. And so even going into, you know, this year, knowing that many of our students had significant gaps in their learning over the past few months, we are actually seeing our data not hitting the ground running a lot further behind than we thought. We're actually in some pretty decent places based on some of the baseline data that we're getting, and so that is very promising. And with the focus this year on applying and learning foundational skills for all, like, early childhood education students, we really are hoping to see the academic data in terms of the student reading and comprehension not only support their English-language arts and their writing, but also the mathematics as well. Because in previous years, we've taken, I would say, more of a jump in ELA, which is where our focus has been, on professional development and building teacher capacity. And math has been very much standards-based, and so we're really trying to build teacher knowledge around vertical alignment of math standards now because we do know that children are coming in below grade level in math. And so instead of teaching them just one way how to solve something and still hold them accountable for higher-level thinking, we're really trying to build the capacity around all teachers to have more of a vertical understanding of standards so they can naturally differentiate for their students. In terms of instructional strategies, we continue to meet weekly for professional teaching teams, and so that has been approximately 60 minutes over the last few years. One thing that we started to do last year, and we're going to continue to do this year, is every time we take a check-in formative assessment, we'll have a 90-minute data period where the teachers will be able to meet, collaborate, analyze student data, and come up with short-term goals as a team. We'll continue to use Math Recovery and Advantage from... We'll continue to use Math Recovery Advantage for monitoring our students' early numeracy skills. And we are looking, typically, we would focus the Advantage up until a second grade due to the lag of education and continued education for some of the students throughout the closure. We wanted to see really what our third graders' ability levels were so we could really look at and hone in on what strengths they had and then start targeting some small groups to ensure that those gaps are closed for those early numeracy skills so then we can get into some of the more complicated and higher-level standard-based things when they get into more multiplication, division, multi-step word problems. In addition to instructional strategies, we've really also focused a lot on the social-emotional needs of our students at Fonseca. And that's something that has been, I would say, just as important, if not more important than the instructional strategies. I think that, you know, where Fonseca has come from in the past in terms of the suspension data and the conduct data, you know, we're in a totally different field right now where our students are happy, they're enjoying being in the classrooms. They've been focusing a lot on self-awareness and self-management. And so, with that, each year, building upon one from the other, we wanted ultimately for the students to be able to regulate their emotions and do so within the Tier One setting. So, there was less time for them to be pulled out of the classroom or within the counselors' offices, but trying to get the counselors in the rooms with the kids and helping them apply the strategies in the moment. We also have behavior therapists that also support students more on that Tier Two support setting. We have a wellness teacher that works with all students, and that's something that has been at Fonseca. And that's a teacher that works with all students, grades pre-K to five, and really reinforces the castle standards as well as whatever we feel as an academic or social-emotional priority for the year. That becomes her focus as well. And so, anything from Choose Love to Zones of Regulation to Teaching Tolerance, the wellness teacher collaborates with both the school adjustment counselors, the student support coordinator, as well as some of the other Unified Arts teachers to really think about how to support students, not just in the academic setting, but also in some of those non-structured settings that we were typically seeing lack of engagement. There's been a lot of outreach in the past, and I would say more so this year than before, trying to keep our eyes on our babies and keeping them in front of the computer screen or coming into the classroom and really trying to see what supports we can provide their families. There has been a lot of hardship cases that have been brought to our attention at Fonseca that we've done a lot of community work with in terms of both supporting families for childcare on their hybrid weeks, providing food, clothing, housing, anything and everything that families need to help support their students so that they can come in and be ready to learn. Finally, I'm just going to wrap up with some new things that the Fonseca Elementary School is doing. So, in the past, we've worked with the Department of Ed around these multi-tiered systems of support academies. And so, we had done one where it was systems of student support. Fonseca has also participated in the PBIS Academy. And now, we are currently in our second year of the MTSS Mental Health and SEL Academy as well as the culturally-relevant Teaching Academy. And so, that's allowed for us as administrators and teachers to be able to get professional development and collaborate with both the Department of Ed, some of the outside agencies, as well as other schools within the Commonwealth that are doing some of the same work.
Any questions? Mimi.
Hi, Ms. Lisi. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
So, I have, well, first of all, it gave me great pleasure to hear you say that social-emotional strategies are just as relevant, relevant, and could be more important than the actual instruction strategies right now. So, that makes me feel real good that you and your employees, your staff, are really pushing and trying to get an understanding on how you can really make this work. But can you give me a little bit on the Zones of Regulation? Can you make me understand that a little more?
Sure. So, the Zones of Regulation, if you actually Google it, there's a lot of different things that will come up. And so, ultimately, it's a way for identifying students based on colors, characters from a movie, but identifying those colors and characters with a feeling and an emotion and allowing the students to really kind of put a name to what it is that they're feeling. And so, the Zones of Regulation was rolled out where the school adjustment counselors and the student support coordinator educated themselves on the Zones of Regulation, built it up with the staff, tried to apply some of the strategies. And really, what it is, is a way to kind of check yourself and see how you're feeling in this moment and why am I feeling this way? And am I ready to move on to learn? And if I'm not, what can I do to get myself in that place? And how can I advocate for myself? So, it's really about, you know, providing the students with not just visual supports, but also the non-academic language in some ways, the SEL language that they need to be able to express how they're feeling so we can work through that and then get to the nature of the problem and then try to keep them engaged in the classroom. But it's something that's in every single classroom. I would say definitely K to five, pre-K has PBS, and it's kind of their own thing. But when they do read alouds and stuff, they'll touch upon the Zones of Regulation. So, it's not something that's in isolation. The teachers actually bring it out into other content areas so the students can see that this social-emotional and being self-reflective and being able to manage and control one's emotions doesn't just happen when I'm angry, but trying to also understand other people's perspectives and how they're feeling and how they may handle the same situation differently.
Thank you. Answered my question. How long has this been in place, Zones of Regulation? And is it something that you're moving towards?
So, the Zones of Regulation was fully implemented last year after we had spent two full years on self-awareness and self-management as a focus. And so, one of the things we wanted to do is we were seeing a lot of students being able to regulate and manage their emotions outside of the classroom and being able to be pushed in back into the classroom to engage. But there was still that time period where they were leaving the classroom. Maybe sometimes some of them needed it, but at some point, how can we get the students to apply those learned strategies in the moment? And so, with the Zones of Regulation came a regulation station. And so, each classroom had an area that had multiple different sensory things that the students could do. They even had some choice into what would be in this area. And it was a place that they would go, set a timer, and they would be able to engage in an activity that would help regulate themselves, get them back into the green zone, and then they'd be able to engage in the work. We're still doing this. However, the regulation station is individualized. So, students might have something at their desk that they might be able to use versus having to go to a specific area within the classroom. I see this continuing to really evolve as much as it can. I mean, the fact that I'm hearing teachers discussing literature and talking about the Zones of, you know, what Zone was that character in? What were they feeling? It's helping them understand a little bit more, too, you know, some of those relationships in fiction texts that maybe they would miss. So, it's really bringing that SEL and that emotional piece and that, you know, what it is to be a person and interact with one another. And then, you know, if I'm not feeling okay, that's okay, and what can I do about it?
Perfect. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Appreciate it.
Tony?
Yeah, Alicia, I want to thank you so much for being with us tonight. I really appreciate the climate that you breed at Fonseca with your teaching faculty. You make them feel like they're all part of a family, like you guys are all like really good friends, and you're all pulling for the same things. I really appreciate that. That's hard to develop in a school. So, I'm going to ask you a question on demographics. Do you, I'm just curious as to what it looks like demographically in the Fonseca School District. A lot of students moving in and out at a high rate or a low rate or no movement at all?
So, consistently, Fonseca has had one of the higher churn rates in the city. And in 2019, I think DESI had us at about 20%. And so, we have right now about 620 students. And if you look at the course of the year, they may, you know, rate the churn rate or, you know, how many kids are actually there total. You know, and a lot of the students that we are seeing turnover are students that are English Language learners or special education students. And sometimes, Mr. Corey, that could be relevant to program placement
Sure.
in some instances, but other times, it is that they're just moving throughout the city or other cities.
Well, last month in our meeting here, we were looking at our charts and, you know, we were looking at the schools that are still working hard on their turnarounds. And of course, Fonseca was in that category. And Dr. Curly gave us a fantastic report for us to understand how our district looks. I'm just, I'm just really, I don't know, I'm frustrated with DESI. You know, I'm frustrated with like all these, all these things in place. You're using Math Recovery Advantage, you're using Anet, you're using all these awesome tools to try to get kids up to snuff, but with a 20% turnaround rate, you know? That's a real hard sell right there. So, I thoroughly appreciate the work that you guys are doing there. Please, on my behalf, relay that to your staff and how appreciative. We would be there physically to visit more, but we're staying away now because of the conditions. If these conditions lighten up in the future, we'll drop by and say hi. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Alicia, I got a question for you. Have you, in your 650 kids, you seen every kid in the school?
Within the building, no.
No, on Zoom, or you've seen it?
Yeah, and there's a handful that we're still pushing, the parents and the guardians, to put the camera on, but the children are participating. But I would say the actual handful
Right.
that we have, for some reasons or not, they might pop on and they might show their face for the, let's say, the morning meeting. But then, they shut their camera off and they still participate because sometimes the Chromebook will lag. And so, then, it's a combination between the video itself and doing the work. But I would say that the school adjustment counselors are really trying to work with the teachers to ensure that we're seeing, because we have about, similar to Mr. Raposo, a 43% fully-remote learning staff. So, we've also encouraged parents to come pick up stuff. We've provided materials. We've been dropping off materials. So, we have done anything and everything we've can to try to at least put a face to every student, whether they are fully remote-engaged or if they're high.
So, how many, how many have you not seen, roughly, just a guess?
Maybe three.
Three, okay.
We've gone to the house, but they're just not participating.
But you've seen them at the house. Okay, so you've seen everybody?
Knock, knock, hi. Like, we want to make sure you're okay.
That's sufficient. You've seen them all, though, okay.
Yes, and there were a few that we weren't sure of because they were on our roster, but then it ended up that they were in different states, so.
I know. Those are the transfers you chase all year. Okay, that's great. Thanks, Alicia. Anything further for Fonseca? Mimi?
Sorry, one more. Alicia, just an honest answer, please. How much difficulty do you think are your K through two students are performing remotely?
I think that it's a very challenging situation for some of the younger students that may not have had any access to technology in the first place, and then we're introducing them to this way of learning. But I think that, for the most part, we've seen some of the parents, you know, really kind of go above and beyond to try to learn it themselves. Or in some cases, they show up at the school and say, "Help us." And so, we've had a lot of opportunity where we've had people engaging with parents that come to the school to problem-solve and troubleshoot mostly technology issues. Some of it is just really, you know, I think we're working some of the kinks out. But ultimately, I think that in some of the instances, the teachers that are in kindergarten and first grade, whether it's remote or hybrid, are looking at other opportunities that when the children are at home, getting them to physically write more just because they're not necessarily getting that piece with the Chromebook.
Okay. Is there anything that is in the remote work, I should say, that ensures the kids are actually writing, the K through two students?
I'd have to look at like particular lesson plans to see what they were expecting for them to produce for whatever the lesson's assessment was, because it could have been that the child did write something and then took a picture of it to show them. So, it really does depend on the lessons, and I have seen some of that. I just don't know how much of that is happening and if it's only for certain grade levels, certain content areas. But they are doing a lot of the maneuvering on the Chromebooks.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further?
Mr. Curry?
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Hart.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Hi, Principal. I'm just, just to go off on what the other school committee members were asking you. You did say you're 43% remote?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And of that 43%, we are confident, obviously, that everybody has a Chromebook?
Yes, so some of the students that are in the Cohort B have their own technology at home, but the majority...
And they're allowed to use that?
Yep, but honestly, the majority of our Fonseca families received Chromebooks and technology through Fonseca as well as the hotspots. I don't know what the numbers would be, but I would guess that they gave a lot of hotspots for Fonseca. And we're still looking at how many students would need technology to be one-to-one. And we're only looking at a handful of families at this point. We've really been able to get the families what they need. The complaint now is that, you know, they're trying to learn the technology or it's not working the way they want it to. But we've been able to provide anyone that has not had access to technology themselves has school-based technology.
Okay, and also, I meant to ask this to Mr. Raposo, but I'll ask you as well. How are the assignments coming along, other students, especially maybe K through two, K through two, but pretty much the whole school at Fonseca? Are the students, you know, the teachers having a tough time remotely teaching with the students fulfilling every assignment or the attendance? I mean, everything that you, and I know it's not an easy task whatsoever, and these are totally uncharted waters, but I just wanted to get a feel from you and the other principals that are here tonight on how everything is, how's everything going as far as the attendance-wise and the assignments? And are we, you know, some reports have been, and I'm not saying your school, but some classes are over at 10:00 in the morning or 11:00 in the morning. What's the overall, your overall feel as far as Fonseca and how they're doing?
Yeah, so I would say for the hybrid classes, so the students are there for week on, week off, and the learning that they're getting in school is similar to the learning that they're getting at home on their off week. In some cases, I have teachers that, on their own merit, wanted to do synchronous teaching. And so, they have a support personnel in their room, but they're teaching students both in front of them and at home at the same time. And so, there's a handful of teachers that are doing that. And so, those students in those classrooms are seeing their classroom teacher pretty much daily. In other cases, where teachers are not either comfortable or they have more students in their classroom, where they feel that they aren't able to manage that, they are receiving support with either a certified teacher or a paraprofessional or instructional support liaison that, similar to if the students were in class, they would come into the classroom and pull a small group of students. Here, it's similar to the same thing where maybe instead of going into the classroom and pulling the small group of students, the paraprofessional or the interventionist is working with the hybrid students to launch the lesson, to go through, support scaffold. And then, in some cases, will swap places with the teacher. So, now, the classroom teacher can see their kids at home while someone is with the in-person children. And so, there are honestly a couple of different, I would say, scenarios of how people are doing things. But the struggle is real in terms of trying to make sure that the children at home are learning as effectively as the children in school. And it depends, it's not just on the teachers, honestly. It also depends on the home structures and what the home life is like in terms of is it able to set that stable environment for the child. And that also goes with attendance because if parents aren't taking the hybrid week seriously, you know, the child might be going on and doing the work at the end of the day, but then aren't engaging in any face-to-face meetings. And so, you know, does that really count for a full day? Did they do the work? You know, and so, when you think about elementary versus high school, I think it's difficult to figure out, you know, what would be appropriate for a child to be counted for attendance? That they're just doing the work or are they participating, a little bit of both? And what does that look like?
And is there any, maybe you know this or maybe you don't, but is there any like major discrepancy between the students that are, 43% of the students that are going remote, what their attendance rate is and what the hybrid attendance rate is, once the hybrid students go back, go home to learn for the week?
I would say that our remote, our remote classes are large. Some of our teachers have up to 40 students. And so, that is significant. And I would say that, for the most part, because those remote students are on a daily basis following the same routine, their attendance, just like it would be in a school, is a little bit more stable than children that have a week on, a week off. Because they, what their week in school is, is a little bit more structured than what they're going to have to be doing at home. So, being able to have time management, executive functioning skills and all that stuff is a little tricky. But the... But the kids that are fully remote have that structure, the same structure, the same teachers every single day.
And, and you, you just said 40, there's a remote, at times, of 40 students and one teacher, remote?
Correct, yes, yep.
Yeah, um, you know, that's all I'm going to say for now, um, Alicia. But I, I want to tell you, I'm, uh, um, very impressed with the teachers, um, during this pandemic, and, and the staff and, and everybody else that's doing their job to educate the, uh, children. Um, and I just, I mean, this is such a, uh, a curveball that we've been hit with. And the, uh, students that are working for remote, that is absolutely the parent's call. Um, but I, I mean, 40 students in a class, remote, taught by one teacher, virtually, Zoom. That's, I, I gotta give, tip my cap off to the, uh, to the teachers. And I do hope that, that it's going, I hope it's going well. And, um, I just, uh, I hope that the, like you said before, uh, I hope that the, the students that are doing the hybrid model, um, of students that are, the, uh, that are remote, are just, uh, getting the, just the best, uh, just as good an education as the students that are in hybrid. So, uh, but this, these are tough times, and, uh, and I, I appreciate the job that you, you, you guys are doing. And, um, thank you very much for being here tonight. I yield. Uh, thank you, Mr. Curry.
Jeff?
Just on the question of, uh, the 40 students, you know, remote, you're talking in one class, right? Like you're
So I think right now, the highest that we have is 36.
Right, I thought that within the MOA that we agreed to, wasn't going to go over the contractual number.
We have $5 a day for each student above the contractual number is what we agreed to in MOU. Hopefully, we approve it today.
We do provide paraprofessional support regardless. Um, and oftentimes, those classes do have a lot of either the special education students or the English language learners. And so those classroom teachers are also receiving support from the ESL interventionist teacher as, and the special ed teacher. And we've also reassigned two special ed teachers to just work fully remote, just to support those fully remote teachers with those high special education.
Yeah, it's not, I didn't ask the question to be critical, it just, that's a lot. And if that means that we have to add more teachers, then we need to add more teachers. But quite frankly, I don't think we should have 36, 40, that's, that's way too high, in my personal opinion. So keep up the good work, you're working the best you can, and say, say the same to your staff, as my colleagues said, they're working hard, we appreciate it. I yield.
Okay, okay, thanks, guys. Uh, next up is Watson. Ms. Hoag?
Thank you, Alicia.
Hang in there, girl.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for inviting me to your, to the school committee tonight. Um, the one pager that I submitted to you last week illustrates some of the strategic actions that, um, the Watson Elementary School faculty and staff have taken during the last school year and are continuing to take this school year, but some of the actions look a little bit different. Um, if you have specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But if not, to begin with, I'll just take you through a couple of specific points on that page with some examples. Um, the actions on the one pager sort of came to light, uh, the summer I was appointed, summer of 2019, after I met with all teachers and staff, and I focused on about five questions regarding culture, structure, and instruction. Um, with regards to the structures implemented during the school year 2019 to 2020, and that are continuing this year, the proactive SEL supports that were developed and used consistently are also continuing this year. Such things as a reflection room versus a Zen Den prove to be a systematic piece that helped our students move forward. Additionally, the school-wide focus last year and this year continues to be on the Massachusetts Department of Education Five Instructional Rocks that were developed in the spring of 2019. These five instructional rocks, uh, became the focus for any professional development done at the school and also were implemented through our professional learning community meetings. The other piece that I'd like to highlight under the structures that were implemented during 1920 and continue this school year is the instructional schedule that was developed, um, with the teachers to maximize the daily learning time and our human resources. This has proved to be successful in making sure our students have time to work in small groups every day with teachers and also to be on, um, instructional technology that is meaningful for them. Under the second heading, where it said monitoring progress, um, two pieces that I'd like to highlight there is, the first one is the student self-goal setting on the instructional technology. We had students, um, engaged in instructional technology, but what we found was that, um, their engagement wasn't, um, as involved as we'd like. So we began to engage students to set weekly goals for themselves, and we were able to see their, um, their development in the programs, um, increase. The other piece, which continues this year with a little bit of more challenges, is our daily attendance calls. Uh, we're refocused, um, for not just worrying about whether students are in school, but also making sure that, uh, parents saw the connections that, um, students needed to be in school in order to increase their instructional achievement. Lastly, the additional measures taken to accelerate the student achievement. Um, a key component with, um, the pieces that were put into place last year and that continue to be put into place this year is our partnership with A net and the use of the A net tools and the coach and the resources. This has helped to refocus, um, the professional learning community's work that happens each week and every content as it did last year. And then finally, the instructional technology resources were leveraged by support staff during small group instruction. So we use Lexia and ST Math regularly, and it's in our students' schedules every day. And the resources that we can get off of the platforms help to drive some of the small group instruction with our paraprofessionals and our instructional support liaisons. So we have found, um, that those pieces have been instrumental to help our students, um, increase their achievement. Our DIBELS data across, uh, last year has increased. We, even though we were not able to, um, assess our students at the end of the year last year, we have assessed them this year, and specifically, we have been able to track student data from two years ago to this year, and we have seen that data, um, increase across, for one child and cross from first grade to third grade. And it, and that's, um, also with A net data, which we look forward to taking our first A net assessment in a few weeks, so to make those comparisons. So I'd be happy to answer any specific questions that you have.
Okay, Mimi?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do at Watson. Appreciate it. Um, as far as the proactive SEL, uh, uh, supports developed and used consistently, can you just go over? I mean, we all know, obviously, what happened in March, and it was, it began implementing when you first got there, but can you talk a little bit about the SEL?
Sure. We try really hard, and this, this was through, um, some conversations had with staff before the year began in 1920, um, to make sure that students are in the, the classroom as much as possible. Um, so calls for support for student needs were made to the office, and the administrators, last year and this year, respond to the room. If a child does need to be taken out of the classroom to be reset for any reason, we have two spaces that we utilize. One is a reflection room that the child can go in, regroup, have some calming strategies, working with the SAC or the student support coordinator. The other room that we have, which we determine sort of what's going on with that child at that moment, is a Zen Den. Um, we haven't used it too much this year, we haven't had a need, to be quite honest. Um, but last year, it was, um, beneficial to sort of differentiate what was the need that the child was having at that particular time. We did track some data with regards to the use of the Zen Den, and we noticed that, um, students were asking to go into the Zen Den for sort of a timeout when they knew they were having some issues in class. So it became really more of a proactive piece with the students. So, but we were very systematic as an administrative team with regards to if we were going to use the reflection room for a student, or if we were going to use a Zen Den.
Okay, what, what is the difference between the two? I mean, is there any reflection happening in the Zen Den's or?
So, yep, the Zen Den, um, there's some tools that kids can use to help calm themselves down. Typically, students, if they need to go into a reflection room, are in a state where they need to have, um, be sitting with an adult and having some breathing, some calming, and things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, we haven't had much use for it this year.
Right.
Um, so we have half of our students in the building, um, and half are remote, literally half. And, um, we haven't had much use for it. We are utilizing more, um, through our, uh, student adjustment counselor, um, student groups via a mass break walk twice a week. There's student proactive groups. So again, like I said, a lot of these things look a little different this year, but we're still implementing them.
Right, with that being said, what does your work look like now in this remote world when it comes to SEL?
So we're using the Choose Love curriculum
As everybody, okay.
in, in the, in the classrooms. Um, the, and it's very nice because, um, the websites that we have access to through the district already have pre-made PowerPoints, pre-made videos. So for our teachers teaching virtually, it's literally, the resources are right there. So, um, those are being used, those conversations are happening, not just during morning meeting, but are threaded throughout the day.
So basically, the Choose Love curriculum is what you're, you're based, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything, Mr. Curry?
Thank you, Celeste. It was just a few months, uh, it was a couple of months before COVID that we, we paid a visit to your school, and we, we left there feeling really good. Culture inside the building felt wonderful. Uh, all the teachers were pulling for each other and pulling for the kids. And, uh, I'm going to say the same thing I told, um, Ms. Lisi, is that, you know, Watson's been in this category that Desi has designated for many years now. And, um, that frustrates me, but it doesn't, it doesn't, frustrates me on their behalf, not on our behalf. I know what we're dealing with here in Fall River. Uh, and I know what type of student, you know, we're, we're dealing with in a gateway city. Um, I, I personally love Watson School, I went to Watson School, so a little bit partial to it. Extremely proud of the infrastructure improvements going on right now, the new windows, boiler, the roof, you know. We're working really hard to preserve that building, and that's symbolic to this committee's integrity as to how much we want to see Watson make it in the future. And I, I, I respect all of the things that you guys are doing to try to make it. I'm going to ask you one question. What does a daily administrative learning walk look like at your school?
So I try to get into every class every day, um, sometimes twice a day, the beginning of the day and the end of the day. Um, I, because I sit in professional learning communities, um, during the day as well, I sort of have a handle on what, um, you know, instruction is going on and what isn't, what we've talked about, whatnot. And it's just really, Mr. Curry, I, I do it so the kids see me, because I, you know, I want to get to know every child's name. And then also because I want to see if there's an issue with a small group, pulling a small group, what other human resource does the teacher need at that point? So, and I don't think I could, you know, help the teachers if I didn't see it. Um, so that's what that walk looks like. I walk through, I sit, um, I might look at what the kids are doing, and then I also give teacher feedback as well.
That's great. So with that feedback, it, it has increased the discourse within the school between you and your staff?
Definitely, and I sit in PLCs, the professional learning community meetings, that happen in ELA and math, um, weekly in every grade. And I, I'm really, I try to be a participant because, um, you know, there's some, some serious things sometimes that we have to talk about. I don't have the answers, but I think the more heads we have at the table, the better we can be, and I can ask the questions, and what more can we do?
Thank you. With that, I yield. Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, anything further for Watson? Okay, thank you, Ms. Hoag, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to jump out of order, um, just for a second, guys. Um, 11.7, please, is a discussion and vote to approve the use of the Durfee High School Music Wing at the Nagel Auditorium for the Massachusetts National Guard 215th Army Band from July 1, 21 to June 30 to 22, as presented by Ken Pacico, Chief Operating Officer.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm, uh, joined by, um, Commander Steve Martins from, um, the 215th. And, um, about three weeks ago, we, uh, I had a visit from Sergeant Roll who wanted to, uh, know if it was possible, uh, during the construction period that the, uh, the army on Dwelly Street, uh, was going to be undergoing, that they could possibly use our facility, or if we had a facility that they could use. The timing, um, works on our part, because the building will not be occupied, uh, and that wing will not be occupied after, um, basically June 15. And, um, the amount of renovations that our building will need won't be starting until well after mid-July of '22. So the timing works for the school department side. Um, and, uh, they are in the, um, design stage, or will be soon, uh, for their building. Uh, it's an internal, um, renovation, um, but not quite sure on the timing. Uh, so, uh, from a logistics standpoint, um, it works on the school department side, and it would be, uh, the auditorium and the, um, the entire music wing in, uh, in the Nagel, um, building. I have, um, Commander Martins here, if you have any questions.
Motion to approve.
To have a motion to approve, I have a second.
I'll second it, I have a question, too.
Go ahead, uh, I have a motion, a second, Tom?
First of all, I'm honored by the request, Ken. I think it's great that we could serve as, as a community partner with the Army Band, um, in their time in need. So my question is based around educational purposes, of course. So as long as they're going to be occupying, uh, that space, uh, when school resumes in the fall, I was just wondering if it could be like a great mentoring thing with the kids? Like, like having our, our kids, you know, witness their, their, their level of instruction, their level of integrity, their level of musicianship, the role, the role that they're setting, just as an example for our kids to see. That's, that's all I was thinking of. You know, I'm saying, if you guys are going to be there, then maybe it could be a, a great example or a great way for the kids to witness something bigger than what they're doing at that moment, because the Army Band's pretty serious.
Mr. Costa?
Uh, first of all, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. I totally appreciate the time and the, uh, consideration for this. We, we actually performed here, uh, at this school nine years ago, and, uh, as I was just coming into command, and it was one of the first initiatives that I wanted to take in being present in our own community. We, we are the governor's band, and we cover the entire Commonwealth, but I do think it's important for us to partner with, uh, with the city of Fall River. We've also, uh, since then, we performed at Durfee High School, uh, a few years ago at part of one of the school clinics that they had, so we did have area high schools also there, uh, to get an opportunity to, to see what we do. And every summer, when we're on our two-week tour, it's usually up, up north in Massachusetts, we partner with a school that will host us while we're there, because it does, a school does give us the ability to rehearse five musical groups at one time. We have 40 members, so there's not a lot of places that we can go and, and take care of business. So our first couple of days are always to put our show together, and the next 10, we're on the road. And we always offer to those schools also to, to, to start with doing some sort of clinic, uh, for those kids that are there. So we would be more than happy to, uh, to turn that into some sort of clinic situation, uh, that we can carry on even after we vacate the area.
Yeah, you answered my question, thank you so much, because it's, kids at that age are very impressionable. But when they see something of a, a highly functional unit like what you guys are doing, it could really make a deep impression on so many of them, you know? And having the clinic and sharing ideas and, and friendship could go a long, long way. So with that, I yield, but I want to say, you know, good luck with all of this moving forward.
Thank you. Mr. Costa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and welcome, Commander Martins. I, many years ago, part of Bravo Company shared the space with the 215 over at Dwelly Street, so unfortunately, it's been 28 years, I think, so if they're finally doing renovations, good, because it's long overdue.
Yes, sir.
Was certainly, uh, needed back then. I'm proud to support, uh, this partnership with the 215. You know, you guys over the years have done outstanding work. And if we're able to support you and the servicemen and women in this venture, then I'm more than happy to support. I want to thank you for your service on the heels of Veterans Day, not just to you, but to your entire staff in command there. And if there's anything that we can do to assist in the transition to the space or if there's issues that go on there, please feel free to come back before the committee and ask, and best of luck to you and to your command there. With that, I yield, Mr. Chairman.
Kevin?
Just had a question on, is this cost neutral? So, we don't have any, it's not gonna cost us anything, we're not gonna gain anything. It's just, so we're not required to have people there because it's gonna be closed down? That was my only question, thank you, I yield.
Okay, nothing further? Oh, hold on, hold on, Josh, Josh, please.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for coming down, Commander Martins. I'm gonna echo the sentiments of my colleague, Mr. Costa. I was in Charlie Battery first and 101st down there on Dwelly Street many years ago. And anything we can do to help you out, I think it's great for us, it's great for you, it's great for the community, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Paul?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commander, welcome and thank you for being here. I see the letter, I'm absolutely in 100% support of this. In the letter, I wanted to ask you, Commander, you mentioned in here the band will need a location that allows for musical performances, teams to practice simultaneously. And additionally, the use of a parking lot for our drill and ceremony rehearsals paramount, is very important to you, correct? And you're gonna be using that particular parking lot on Ray Street for that, for those rehearsals?
Whatever, whatever, whatever spaces around the area that we can use, just for the sake of rehearsing for our, you know, the parades and that sort of thing that we do. It wouldn't necessarily be every time that we get together, but it is, it is a staple in what we do that we need to address once, you know, once in a while when we are all together at the same time, sir.
And usually what, I mean, one, if you do do that and it's not on every time that you go to, that you're gonna be using the location, at what time will you do the rehearsals? In the parking lot?
Yes, sir, we go through the Fall River Police Department to make sure that it's okay in the time period that we do. Typically, we'll do it, you know, later in the morning and it won't be anything that's too long. We do it at Dwelly Street right now from time to time. And again, that's something that we always go through the, the police department on to make sure we have their support.
That's all I needed to know, thank you, Commander, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetza?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. We're gonna, we're gonna stay with out of order, just for one more item, please. 11.5, a discussion, the Disney refund as presented by Matt DiMaris, Principal of Durfee High School.
Good evening, everyone, thanks for having me tonight. Last spring, as, as our current context emerged and we started to put things on delay and pause and ultimately cancel some trips, I know there was an interest on the committee to hear back if there was any monies lost by the students for trips that were canceled. So, we, we held off as long as we possibly could with deadlines and contracts in terms of cancellation. And when you go beyond a date, you lose more money. So, at the last minute, we did cancel and ultimately travel was not allowed. Reimbursements have come back and it's certainly been a long and windy road for both groups of students waiting for, for money back. We had a trip slated for Universal with the band orchestra and the chorus. That trip has been almost entirely refunded except for $97 a student. What happened was we lost $50 deposit per student to the airline. And there's a potential for $47 more dollars per student to come back by way of the hotel deposit. That hotel was slated to open July 1st, it didn't happen. Didn't happen again on August 1st nor September and October, and here we are in November. There was a communication that said there's a potential that it may open, but that's something that still remains uncertain. So, for that particular trip, the total loss was $7,469. And with 77 students on that trip, that works out to $97 per student at this time. The senior trip that was slated to go to Disney, which was a smaller group of students, 26 students, these were students that stepped up and were part of seniors helping freshmen and working with the freshman students, getting them oriented to the school. Part of the thank you to them was to organize a trip, certainly it's self-funded. It wasn't a free trip. So, because of the smaller size of the trip, the, the pain on, on the other end of losing the deposit, they felt a little more. So, the current loss for that trip is $8,066. I was able to provide you with, with a letter from the travel company. And it looks like that travel company is gonna shut down as well and that there wouldn't be any further refund. So, they're, they're short $8,066 or $310 per head. As I brought this forward to Dr. Malone this summer, late in the summer, and discussed, you know, is it, is there a potential appropriate use of CARES Act money to cover this loss as it was in my eyes due to COVID in that, you know, the trip was canceled? And it, it does look like it fits within the parameters and the guidance of use of that funds. But in speaking with Dr. Malone today, he brought up the potential that within our operating budget, because of some savings that are going on that are, that are obvious to us, that perhaps it might be better if, if we were to consider this to be looking, looking at it through use of operating funds. So, I'm here, no one has, no student or parent has asked me, like, hey, can I get the refund and it's full? But I thought it was the right thing to do to at least come before you and ask you to consider this.
Mr. Costa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Principal DiMaris, has, so, let's take them separate, I guess. One is the band, so is that through the Band-Aids?
Yes.
Are they the ones that sort of sponsored this trip or?
It's, yes. Ultimately, the funding was collected and it went through the Band-Aids.
Through, through fundraising efforts or?
Both. So, the way the Band-Aids is set up is that students that are in the band orchestra and chorus have their own account. And when they go out and they do tag days and they do different things, the money goes in their account. And then the student can choose to say, all right, I'm using that money to buy my, a band shirt or to pay my way on a trip. When the refunds came back, the funds raised by the students by way of fundraisers stayed in their account. So, if there was, if there was money lost, the $97 in this case came out of their pocket with their, their private contributions towards, towards the, the trip.
I, I can say this, that in that particular instance, I mean, if the committee down the road is determined that, you know, legally we can use, you know, taxpayer funds for reimbursement of, of these types of situations, and I would just ask that that money go back into that account. Not that I'm trying to shortchange the individuals, but I just think in terms of, of the optics on it, if you will, I think allowing the Band-Aids to continue to perform and do their things with that money in the account as opposed to, if I heard you correctly, some of that, some of that, those funds were fundraised. And so, how do you reimburse, how does a district reimburse individuals for funds that were fundraised for a particular trip? And so, I, I don't mind, like I said, you know, when we have a broader discussion, further discussion on it, I just want to make sure that, you know, legally, whether we put it back in their account and then let any student who's in the band going forward, sort of, we're sort of reimbursing the account as opposed to necessarily each individual on a trip.
Sure.
And I guess the other piece is, whether it's the band or the Band-Aid orchestra or the chorus, has they, has there been any consideration or discussion regarding any legal actions against these entities that took the deposit? And so, I guess what I would need is more information about what the risks were when you, when you put these deposits down? Was there anything in, in the document or contract to sign that says that, hey, if a pandemic hits or if a, whatever the case may be, you won't get this refund? Like, what was our understanding going in in terms of the liability of putting this money down for these deposits? And I'd like to see that information as well.
Sure, I, I don't, I know that it would come with any standard, you know, you accept that if you're gonna reschedule an airline flight or whatever, you're gonna get dinged with some money. And then it's standard language, whether it says pandemic in there or not. I know that on the Band-Aid side, on the front end, they told students that you could lose $150 deposit if you decide to not go on the trip too late. The way I'm looking at it, this is a unique situation and it is differently. Just to speak to, to what you were saying earlier, the money that the students fundraised is still in their account. It did not go, you know, in theory, it went towards the trip. But as it got reimbursed from the airline and from the other, it went back into their account. And only the private funds were, was what went back to the student. It would be all, only what came out of their own pocket.
So, what's currently outstanding in the 97, would that go back into the account?
No, this is, this is out of pocket.
So, that would go to each of the individual students? Okay. And I guess the, the last piece is, you know, is it a similar situation with the senior trip? So, all of those funds were out of pocket from the 26 students and their families? Or was that fundraised, is there an account for it or?
Well, I'll have to do a little digging on that for you. I know that it was a, a short window. They may have done a tag day, I'm not sure, I can find that out. But I know that their, their level of accounting in terms of student accounts, et cetera, wouldn't be at the same level as Band-Aids. It's been an organization that's been around for a while. These were the, the senior class advisors running a trip for 26 kids.
Okay, thank you, I yield, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything further? Kev?
Can you just, I, you said it's going back into their account, meaning the Band-Aids? Is that what you were?
Well, the Band-Aid says a general account, okay? And if we're all part of, we're all in the band. We each, if we take part in fundraisers, okay? Then the five of us, we took part in a tag day and it was $100. So, $20 is gonna go into each of our accounts. And then when it gets time to spend the money, if they're going on a trip or whatever, the kids can either choose to pay or they can say, I'm gonna use the money from my account to pay for that.
Yeah, I, I think, I agree with Mr. Costa, I think we need to get a little more info to look at it. But if they, if, I think what he was trying to say was if they raise the money, it should probably just stay in the Band-Aids rather than go to the individual student. But you're saying they could buy a shirt with it or something else?
Right.
How does that intertwine with it, if you could look into that?
So, that, so what I'm saying is this, and I, and I know this for sure, okay? Any money that was paid back to students was money that came out of their pockets. If there was money in excess that was returned to the student by way of their own, like Kevin Aguirre, I paid 1,000, but 750 came out of pocket, 250 came out of his account. 250 went back into the account and the 750 was returned to Kevin Aguirre. So, no money that was raised by the organization as a whole was given back to an individual student, but it is still available for the students to use moving forward.
Right, but to, to, what I'm trying to say is if, the same logic of that of, if Kevin Aguirre was in the band, I raised some money, the 250 is in my Band-Aid account?
Mm-hmm.
If ultimately it gets to the point where this committee has to decide whether we're gonna reimburse somebody and Kevin Aguirre has $250 in his account, why not just take the $50 or 97, whatever the number was, from that account? So that, that at least person doesn't have to get, they don't have to pay out of pocket, it's gonna come out of their fundraising money. But it might lessen the burden of the whole district or?
I, I agree with that logic on the front end of this. But with Band-Aids being a separate 503CB organization, they have a board and they made a decision that they were gonna keep it clean and leave it that way. That's, that's what they decided. Again, they, they didn't ask me to stand in front of you to ask for this. And if, they might not want to pursue it any further, if they're, if they're not looking to, to keep that money.
Just like they have a board, we have a school board too. So, if we said we were gonna pay only with this condition, then that would be, we'll take that up when it comes. But, thank you, I yield.
Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Question for, I guess, the superintendent or Mr. Almeida. So, say we agree to refunding this money, where's the money gonna come from? Do we have money floating around in the account? I mean?
We had two options for funds. One was the one-time expenses of the CARES money, but the CARES money is the ability to carry over. And the other, we would simply use unexpended funds, preferably in a salary line that we still have, unspent, unassigned. The reason why we have money there is because we have laid hires, we still have in filled positions. So, there is some money available there.
Okay, I mean, I noticed tonight, this is for discussion purposes only. I don't want to see the kids lose their money. You know, if we have the ability to refund them the money that they put into their own personal money, I think that we should do it. I'm not sure if this committee would entertain a motion to do so tonight, but I'll put that in a form of a motion that we repay the students their own individual costs for this program.
Anybody gonna second? Okay, not hearing, not hearing a second, Mr. DiMaris?
I'm gonna make a motion to table.
I'm sorry?
Make a motion to table, so we at least bring it back at some point.
Second.
I agree with that. Any discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
No, not a motion to table.
Okay. I'm sorry, Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hetza?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Kev.
Can I just make a comment on that same issue is, not necessarily for the, this particular piece, as a whole body of a school system, we have to worry about if we, if we did something for this group, what about others so that we, so I just want to throw it out there to the superintendent and principals or whoever, there might be other cases that it weren't like this, but that at least for the future, that we can at least get some more info. With that, I yield, thank you.
Okay, next item up, 11.3, presentation and discussion COVID-19 reopening update as presented by Dr. Matthew Malone.
So, less of a presentation, more of just a discussion. I've given, in the, in the binary information, and I believe you were, I sent you on Friday the state's entire presentation of the weekly COVID spread rates. And then I believe at your, at your table, you have the one, it's 100, it's like 180-page document, the one pager just on where Fall River is in terms of spread rate. You also, I sent you on Friday the updated weekly dashboard that we have internally. And you can have that for your files and paper version as well. I'm here tonight with this agenda item, there's been many, many questions from members of the school committee and others regarding where we are and what we're doing. As we said at the outset during the summer, that we would reopen safely. We would do so and monitor conditions. We would look at various metric points and we would make future decisions whether or not to pivot in our posture from the hybrid model to a fully remote model, which we, fully in-person model depending on the status of the virus in the community. I think we've shown and we've demonstrated in good faith, and I want to thank everyone for actually delivering on that our plan works. We've been able to open, we've opened safely. I've been able to close schools and classrooms since September 7th, 16th, based on needs that we may have had as a result of the virus. And we've done that, we've done that successfully. We've also cleaned and deep cleaned and sanitized and provided PPE and cleaning materials and technology and hotspots and food. And you name it, we've done it. And we've done so successfully. So, we've made it here now to November 9th. And as you can see, not only across Massachusetts, but across the country, there's been an uptick in, in spread rates. We are in the red zone for four consecutive weeks. We've actually jumped very high in the red. We're now the fifth highest community in the Commonwealth for community spread. But that is not the spread that's inside of our schools. So, we have this conflicting information. We started this summer by directed by the governor, let's look at these one rates. And then in the last week, there's really been a shift to look at multiple rates, including school spread rates. And in fact, the governor said on, on Friday that he wants more schools open, more schools across the Commonwealth. I will say, I believe we are one of only two urban districts in Massachusetts, there's 26 urban districts, that has as many students as we have in person on a daily basis. And I want to thank everyone for doing that. Us in New Bedford have the majority of students in the hybrid model. And we've been able to operate in that capacity in a way that, that, that has made a difference. has made a difference, I think, in the delivery of instruction. But what becomes very hard through this process is because of how we combat COVID and the standard operating, uh, procedures and protocols, not only in place locally here in Fall River, but across the Commonwealth and nationally, uh, we've seen an uptick in positive cases and then the result of that is more students having to quarantine, more adults having to quarantine, more, uh, uh, testing, uh, less capacity, uh, less ability to provide services. So as you see in my report, uh, as of, uh, Friday, we had forty-one total employees, uh, currently in quarantine, forty-one. Uh, I have one thousand nine hundred and fifty employees, uh, so that forty-one, uh, represents a small, one thousand nine hundred and eighty represents a, a small number, but it's still capacity, we don't have subs, it's, it's hard, it's very hard. So everyone's working overtime. I mean, I guess frankly, this is a tire, most tiring thing that I think anyone, uh, in public education or any profession has ever done. Uh, and, you know, we're running four consecutive schedules at once. You ask why are class sizes large? I mean, do the math. Why? Because based on the numbers of kids that pick remote versus the numbers of faculty we have, and our ability to make sure that every faculty, all the coaches in the district, all the specialist teachers are actually teaching classrooms now, uh, to get that down, it, it's not a perfect science. Everyone thought, oh, kids go remote and we just put them on a computer. No, they're actually getting taught. So I know I just wanna correct earlier information, Fonsica has one class of thirty-three students. It's a foundation class. If we pass the M O U, that, that person gets five dollars extra for that one kid. Agreement's thirty-two, so there, there was a class at forty at one time, we fixed that, and that's how we sent staff that were centrally employed, uh, out to the field, uh, to make sure that we got those numbers down. So, uh, this is hard work. I'm concerned that we, again, we've made it to November ninth, we've maintained, uh, our stalwart, um, core value of, of staying calm, uh, and, and thoughtful and proactive in our, uh, work, uh, but it's, it's definitely a challenge. So we've made it here today, I know you have questions, uh, as to where we are. Couple of quick numbers before you ask questions. Right now I have ten thousand and ninety students enrolled, that's pre-K to K, that's down about two hundred and fifty students, uh, from last year's numbers. Now that's not gonna be the October one number, because it doesn't take into consideration out of district placements and some other things, but I had about ten thousand three hundred and thirty-three kids, uh, here last year. So we know and we've seen across the Commonwealth, a decrease in the number of kindergarteners and pre-K kids, uh, in the district, but we're hit particularly hard at kindergarten here in Fall River and that number. So I'm concerned about that. Uh, our average attendance rate, oh, well, so in cohort A, which is our high-needs cohort, we had about one thousand four hundred and fifty students eligible, we have one thousand two hundred and ninety-six students involved. So that means their parents said they wanted the full eight out of ten-day, uh, schedule. Cohort B, which is our fully remote, where there's four thousand three hundred and fifty-two students, and that figure fluctuates daily. As you know, we've been bringing some higher-needs kids back, but we also, uh, have some families that, uh, pick remote, uh, and, uh, can do so. And then we divide cohorts, C and D out, uh, and I got about twenty-two hundred kids average in each of those cohorts. So when you do the math, uh, in terms of how many kids we have every single day, uh, in classes, we got about thirty-four, thirty-five hundred kids, uh, present. Our attendance rates have been in the high eighties, but that's misleading because how we changed how we tracked attendance because of the new model, it, it, the figure I'll give you in two days would be the actual figure, because we go back, we have some kids that are virtually absent, who actually did the work and the timing, they then get coded as virtually present, uh, when we're done. So those figures, but as of today, our average attendance was, it, our, our, our overall attendance for students was eighty-six percent. That's down about six percent from our average last year, but again, that will go up over the next couple of days. So we're in the ballpark where we were, uh, as we mentioned, as I know you're all concerned, what about the kids that we haven't, uh, been able to track? And, uh, we have a listing of about sixty students who have attendance concerns, we're tracking every one of those kids, as, as you heard from Principal Lisi, the three kids that she mentioned, they're going out to home, we're doing that across the district. But we're tracking, uh, we have protocols in place around attendance that we've put in place in the last, uh, two weeks, thanks to the team and, and, uh, Maria and, and Michael for their work on that. Uh, and, uh, you know, we're doing, uh, really, uh, ground-level, uh, work in terms of, uh, making sure that we're getting contacts with those kids. And tonight's policy, uh, I'm recommending you adopt tonight's policy. It will require, what Principal Lisi, uh, talked about was that, uh, camera on at least twice in every single class, at the beginning and the end, so we actually have eyes on, uh, every single kid. That's not part of our policy now, I've added that, uh, taken from the policy that was adopted by the school committee in Brockton. So, uh, I'm here tonight to answer your questions. If you ask me straight up, like, what do you think? The way I'm looking at, uh, the year is a week at a time, and we've made it through November ninth. As I said, I would come to you and share with you where we were in our plan. Uh, I wanna make it through till next week, looking and monitoring, looking at and monitoring, uh, the numbers, uh, and then can, can, continue to go from there. I feel strongly that the model that we're in is, is, uh, there's definitely risk, but through mitigation, I think we've given the best possible, uh, outcome, uh, to a very challenging time. I believe strongly that in-person learning is superior to, uh, remote, although, as, again, I'll pick on Principal Lisi, she talked again about how she has teachers doing synchronous instruction, which is amazing, and I've observed it myself, we're actually gonna be featured on W G B H for that work, uh, at Fonsica. So, you know, the, uh, there is remote work that's really of, of, of high quality, but it's that interaction between the adult and the child in an actual classroom in, uh, in real time and real space that I think is the difference maker. So from my observations in the field, talking with parents, parents are very happy with what we're doing, teachers are definitely tired, uh, it's, it's stressful, they're trying, but they're, you know, they're also reporting how, um, worth it, it all is. So with that, uh, I'll end it with saying, to me, it is worth it, uh, but I'm not gonna be stupid and bullheaded, meaning if we see an outbreak and uptick, we're gonna do what we need to do, shut down, clean out, let it sit, uh, and then get back at it, we're gonna be smart always. Um, and I do believe and I, I feel, uh, again, that this, uh, this work that we've done this year has been worth it for the kids and the families that we've served, uh, and we'll continue to do so, uh, moving forward. With that, I'll answer any questions that the school committee may have.
Uh, okay, let's go, let's go to Josh first and then Mimi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Superintendent, uh, so I understand the risk and I know that, uh, you know, times are trying, but is there any opportunity for us to bring more students back at this time, um, get more face-to-face with these students?
So we, we've, uh, we, right now we're working on cohort, um, B students to come back, uh, higher-needs, uh, cohort B students to come back, and the cohorts that they qualify for based on, uh, five indicators of high needs, uh, so we're working on that, and we're at the six-foot, um, social distancing mark. I could fit probably three or four to five more kids in at three, in every classroom at the three-foot mark. The governor talked about three-foot, but we haven't received any guidance, they keep using three to six in their conversations, but we, we chose the six-foot social distancing because at the time, that's what the CDC was saying. So in terms of bringing more kids back, I can bring back limited numbers of kids, talking about a couple hundred across the system, uh, and we, you know, we'll, we'll do so, but at the same time, we still have parents pulling kids out to go full remote, and, uh, it's, uh, it's definitely, uh, one of, it's, you know, we, you know, and, and having those hard conversations, uh, with, with parents about, uh, the value of both models, my whole team has done it, I know the teachers are doing it, I've been having conversations with parents, and, uh, uh, I'm encouraging them if, 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 if they can take a leap of faith to, uh, go with the hybrid model.
Now, how about parents who may, may have decided since we started that maybe it's okay to go back to class? Have they been offered that, or are there parents that are requesting that maybe they can send their students to school?
So we, we're starting to get requests from parents, yes. Uh, as, as I told you, we, we've taken some of the higher-needs kids that, that, and that's one of the reasons that parents were asking, because we're seeing a great disconnect with the higher-needs kids on, fully remote than we are with the, uh, atypical grade-level performing, at or above grade-level performing kids. Uh, so we've taken some back there. The next phase for us, uh, would be to continue to talk to parents, once we fill up, uh, as many of the high-need seats that we have, the seats available, I wanna bring back, open it up to, uh, parents that, that simply just want their kids back in school if they've picked full remote. So if I can do that, the original plan was January, we're now in November, if I can get kids in, uh, before that, even with the grade, the semester shift, we will, but again, we're taking it on a week, a week-by-week basis.
All right, thank you. I yield.
Uh, Mimi?
Hi, Dr. Malone. Um, first, thank you, uh, for your report. Um, I do know that your team has been working diligently on trying to figure out the attendance issues, uh, because of, uh, such unprecedented times, but I do have, um, a couple of questions on the attendance. Uh, we're not at policy yet, but the policy that you are bringing forth tonight, uh, one of the aspects says, uh, it's, it's under the remote, students who are unable to attend school due to illness or quarantine will be counted absent unless they are actively assessing the remote learning platform and participate in remote instruction as set forth above. So I have a couple of questions. Uh, one is who determines, uh, the illness? Uh, where are the, like, do the parents call the school and are they sent to the nurse? And then the nurse determines illness, and then if they complete all remote work, it is a virtual present? My second question is, if a student is in school on their hybrid week and a nurse determines them ill, are they sent out of school for the fourteen days and/or take a COVID test to return back to school? So those are my, two of my questions, and I think I have a couple more.
I'm gonna let the medical professional, uh, answer the, the technical questions.
So I'll answer, this is, I'll answer the first question that you had regarding if a child is seen in the nurse's office and they're sick?
Okay.
And they have symptoms, they are, they are sent home, and there's three ways that they can return to school?
Okay.
One, they can get a COVID test, it's negative. If they have improvement of symptoms and no fever for twenty-four hours, they can come back. Number two, they can see their physician, and if it's deemed not COVID and it's another diagnosis, they can get a note to come back, or they may choose to do neither one of those two, in which time they'd have to stay out for ten days, and after the ten days, twenty-four hours with improvement of symptoms and no Viva for twenty-four hours.
So that's a student in school, face-to-face?
Face-to-face.
When, when the nurse deals with that student?
Right, right.
Okay. So now a student, I don't know if this is for you or it's not, a student is in, is in school, okay, but the, the parent chooses to keep them home, uh, communicates with the school. I don't know with who, either the teacher, the principal, the nurse's office, I just don't know, uh, if, if all the schools are on the same page when it comes to who they need to call to say, my student is going to be absent today, I'm gonna keep him home for the greater good and they will complete their remote work, okay? I guess my question is, what are we telling our parents to do in this instance? And is there a plan to hold our parents and our families accountable for these, like, there has to be some determination, I think, to, to state whether or not it's an illness? Like, I don't think that the kids should be getting full credit if they stayed out of school because they attended a birthday party and everybody was tired at home and didn't come to school.
Right, but?
I think that, I mean, we have to have some determining?
Well, if we get a phone call that a child is sick?
Correct.
Um, usually that phone call goes over to the nurse.
Okay.
Because some of the schools, when they make phone calls home, it could be the SAC that calls, so we have that phone call over to the nurse and they talk to them about if they have symptoms, what they should be doing. Um, usually we tell them to contact their primary care physician, and they will either order a test, and most of them are ordering tests, most of them are not seeing the children, they're doing a phone call to the parent, and they are ordering tests for them.
Okay.
Um, if we have that information, either the child that we send home or a phone call, then we have a way of not clearing them in the computer. We notify the principal that they are not cleared to come into school right now, um, and then the principals would take over. I don't know how they communicate to their, uh, staff for remote learning. If the child is sick though, the child's sick.
Right.
If a child is a close contact and we send them home because they have to quarantine, but they're not sick, then certainly they, they can do remote work.
Yeah, I don't think I'm necessarily talking about the in, in-school student. I'm thinking, I'm, I'm, yes, they're supposed to be in there?
Yeah.
They're class that week, but they stay at home. Those are the questions I have on the attendance.
But it's also, if, if we've quarantined them and it's their week to be in school and we've quarantined them, we also let the, the school know.
Okay, nobody's quarantined them, they, they're, they're supposed to show up on a Monday.
Right.
Okay, and their, their first day in school, and they don't show up because they have the sniffles, okay? And then the parent, who is the parent supposed to call just because of the sniffles? Nobody diagnosed?
Yeah.
Just, okay, thank you.
So we still have kids who are gonna be absent?
Right.
Just like they were?
Right.
Before in a typical year?
Right.
A, a parent calls the school office and reports their child absent. Kids, parents and kids can't just flip-flop from remote to in-person. They're assigned to a cohort, if they're out, they're out, right? They're marked absent. So they can't automatically now, just because we're in a hybrid model, say, Johnny's not going to school, so they'll go, they'll do their remote week.
Right, I agree with you, wholeheartedly, wholeheartedly agree with you.
So they call the school, the, the, um, clerk will notify the principal and they notify the administrators.
I, I guess, I don't know, I guess it's just how do we determine if, if it's a good decision by the parent, just keeping their child home for the greater good and, and their child, uh, completing all their work? Should they get credit or should they, they be marked absent? I guess that's my question for the team.
I think usually, last week I dealt with a parent who, you know, uh, was asking that exact question, you're gonna have some extenuating circumstances, but I'm gonna go to superintendent's office. Um, a lot of times I'll answer that call, so it's case by case, it depends on what the situation was, if they were, if they were afraid because they were exposed to somebody at home, et cetera, but typically, parents for any absence, just like in a typical year, parent would call the main office and report their child's sick.
Mm-hmm.
And it would count as an absence.
Okay. I, I guess, it's, it's a tough one, it's tough. I mean, a, a couple of parents have reached out to me with this, with this situation, and I just didn't have an answer, so I'm just?
And they can, you can refer them to them.
Right.
I can, I can speak to them. I mean, we've had a lot of, of one-on-one conversations with parents about extenuating circumstances. We have to have a policy in place and people can't just automatically now all of a sudden, I'm not going into it.
I agree.
And, but I'm gonna do my remote learning, so I'm gonna get full credit for being in school.
Right.
We can't just have arbitrarily people make that decision.
I, I agree, I agree. Thank you.
Well.
I yield.
I, I got one question for Karen. Karen, you said a student tests negative, they come back to school?
They, if they, if they go home with symptoms?
They go home with symptoms?
And they test?
Or what if they go home because they've been exposed to, um, Mimi and she's got COVID and I'm near her, I go home and I test negative?
Doesn't matter if they, if they're quarantined for fourteen days.
Okay.
You can't, you can't test out of, of a quarantine.
Yeah, that's what, I had that discussion today with the lieutenant governor and she sent me a note, the CDC requires the, the quarantine, they're working with other states right now to change the number of days after quarantine after testing negative, because I think that that's one of the, uh, the problems. You should be able to test out of a quarantine if you've waited a sufficient number of days, because you got people to test negative at? that have to be in home for 10 or 11 days. The odds of them getting sick are, go down to almost zero percentage when you look at the statistics.
They are, they are, they do say though that you can test positive for 14 days.
Correct.
That's why the 14 days right now, they're seeing the symptoms.
But as a percentage, it's almost down to zero.
Yeah.
Cause uh, it's in the first, usually in the first five days, but then as it goes off the end, it really drops out. That's why they picked the number 14, cause the number's diminishing to almost zero.
But I have seen people in 10 days, 11 days.
I know.
So until they change that though, we have to follow-
Yeah, they're working on it. They, they know that that's one of the, the things they have to work on.
Right.
Uh, anything further, Tommy?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. And to follow up on my colleague, uh, Ms. Lara, his concerns, um, we're just seeing that the remote piece is, is, it's missing the mark, especially in the very earliest grades. And what accountability do we have if a child is sent home with the sniffles? Um, is, is an attendance officer checking on if that child doesn't come back to school in five or six days? I don't know what it looks like anymore, but it's just, you know, it's very different. So, anybody, can anybody answer that question?
Yeah, I think they're doing the same thing as they-
Right. We're following the same protocols that we were before. We're not gonna let a student be out for five days without anyone contacting. Somebody from the school after a couple of days is gonna contact from home to find out if that child's still sick. A lot of times, parents are really good about letting us know so-and-so's still sick, just so that we wouldn't worry, but we wouldn't-
So Maria, I'm gonna think out of the box just for the heck of it. Um, is there any, any way that we can create a policy to put a little bit more responsibility on the parent to make sure their child is functional on remote or hybrid and in-person or remote? Because I'm, I'm seeing our numbers, our attendance numbers, according to the report tonight was 86%. I mean, that's low. I mean, that's 14% of our kids that are not in school. That's, that's a high, that's a high attendance rate. So that concerns me.
Right. We have to, we have to instill a value of, the value of education in our families and our students and our parents. They need to wanna come to school, they need to wanna learn. Our parents need to value that so much that they know that if a kid is missing school, they're missing out. That as a, as a city, that's something that we need to, to grow.
If a child goes remote, is there anything we can do to hold a parent responsible to or make sure that, you know, business is being taken care of?
Well, I mean, I would say we, our parents need to be parents, right?
Right.
We actually have an SOP that Dr. Malone was bringing forth that we've met and we've put together, standard operating procedure as to what we're doing. And I feel very comfortable that school department, we are doing our part. We are above and beyond. Our teachers are calling, our school administrators are calling and we're gonna ask parents to, to jump in and, and to also do their part and make sure kids are, we, we get it. Remote learning will never ever replace a student having a teacher in front of them, ever. It's not the same, it never will be. The best place for uh, teaching and learning to happen is in the building with teachers. But we have to, you know, we have to make it mostly that and make sure that everybody's doing their part.
Thank you. I didn't, I didn't wanna, I didn't mean to, you know, sound alarming in that way. I'm just trying, you know, figure it out as well too because it's, we're in such a different place with all of this.
I heard.
I thank you for all of your efforts. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Um, Kev?
Just, uh, how many students have we brought back in the last month since we've been trying to roughly, do we?
Two hundred and ninety-two students we brought back.
And then you have limited capacity?
Two hundred and ninety-eight. But we've, no, because we've also lost students.
Yep.
So it's a net?
Net about the same. So that's why we're gonna keep trying to bring kids back.
Some left, so it's basically a wash.
It's about a wash.
No, we still have, we still-
A little bit north, but we got more kids in than we did. But it's not a, I don't want you to think it's two hundred and ninety-eight more kids. It's, it's probably a hundred and eighty.
Yeah. The, my, my concern, I think it's, you know, we need the, the kids to be in. My concern is that if we start to bring back more kids, if we don't keep up with the mitigations that we currently have in place, the numbers are going very high in the community, that we could be in a bad situation. Um, to quote something that you wrote to us in email, "We have lots of positive exposure and positive results." And I know that's concerning to everybody. My only concern is that we can keep up the mitigation and not run the risk of like, just to get more kids in, that we don't do the mitigation because then we might find ourselves if we have nobody in.
We do the mitigation no matter what. And we're doing the sanitation no matter what. We're also doing the masks, we're doing the distancing, the new regs that just came out, change for school. We're doing everything we possibly can. What we're seeing is a lot of the spread is community-based spread. And that's one of the reasons so I'm, you know, we're down, as I said, 41 employees from community-based spread. And we feel, given the numbers and some of the numbers that the mayor just cited, the numbers amongst students are very, very low across the Commonwealth. Yes, Fall River has an uptick, uh, but the numbers around, among students aren't what we think. Kids are still getting it. Yes, they are. Uh, and, and it's easier to spread. But the numbers are low enough that we feel we could bring back some. I'm not, and I'm not, I didn't, you didn't hear me say, let's go three foot distance yet. It's six foot. Given the ability to, if I have any more space in six foot, how many more kids could I bring in? Now, we thought we would get to that taking in these two hundred and ninety-eight, but we lost some students. So there's still some space to take in some more kids.
Yep. I hear you. And all I'm suggesting is, to me personally, when I, when I read the email that where you said, "We have lots of positive exposure and positive results this week," you weren't lying. The numbers speak for themselves. We have and the community has more. So all I'm suggesting is make sure that we don't, just to get more kids in, that we don't lower the, you know, mitigation. Um, the numbers are going up, people are more worried about it. Our staff is, you know, more worried about it. Kids can, whether they get it from the community or in school, it's, they're still going home, they still, could still spread it. And we're in a pandemic. So all I would ask is that we continue to be vigilant and uh, keep us informed. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, somehow I got uh, disconnected with the Zoom. So I just called in. Um, is Nurse Long, uh, can I, I wanna ask Nurse Long a question?
Okay, she's here.
Okay. Uh, Nurse Long, when, when, um, I just wanted to uh, make sure that um, the contact tracing, um, when someone in the schools uh, tests positive for the COVID-19, how, uh, what, uh, and that triggers the contact tracing, correct? Obviously?
Yes.
Um, what, so can you give me an example of just maybe not, obviously not giving out names or anything like that, but how has that, how has the contact tracing been going uh, when someone is testing positive for COVID-19? Are we getting, are we getting everybody in that, you know, in the, in the thread where that, that person was uh, was tested positive and everybody, everybody's been contacted? Are we, are we, are we safe, am I safe to assume that that's going on?
Yes. It usually starts with a phone call from our Board of Health that will call and say that we have either positive child or a staff member um, that's positive. So they contact us, um, they call the school nurse where the child is at school, goes to school. So we take that name, we go to the um, classroom, we talk to the teachers, we see who has even maybe taken that child out of the classroom for 15 minutes for therapies. And um, the nurse will fill out all the close contacts and we send that paperwork back to the um, local Board of Health nurses for tracing. Um, we are given the isolation dates by the nurses at the Board of Health and the quarantine dates um, are discussed with the staff um, and as well as any other student families. And then um, we also will contact HR. So they know that if a staff member has to be quarantined, they're aware of that. Uh, and if it's a, if it's strictly a staff member, we do the same thing. We talk to them to see if, who they've been in contact with, uh, and if they meet the criteria of close contact.
And we've been pretty successful, you'd say, right?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Um, now, the, the other question I have, like, over, I guess I saw the numbers over the weekend. Uh, we had on Saturday, uh, sixty-six positive tests, on Sunday seventy-eight, and today forty-seven. Um, now, are we, do we know where, I'm not saying in the schools, but that was, that was for citywide. So I guess maybe the question might be to the mayor. Uh, Mr. Mayor, do we know exactly where um, these people are, are located in the city? Is there a certain area where it's, it's higher than, than other areas in the city? Um, uh, do, do, do we go by maybe zip codes?
No.
You know, where, where, where these people are, uh, where the folks of the, where the citizens of Fall River are getting the uh, is there one area in the city or is it spread out throughout the city?
It's spread out, Paul. It's uh, everywhere. It's across the age groups, it's across the zip codes, it's in all areas of the city. As I said at the last meeting, it's just a slow rise statewide and country, and countrywide. I mean, the numbers um, in the country are breaking records every day. So it's a, it's a long, slow climb. Um, we did this in uh, March, April, and uh, May and June was really bad. And then we slowed. So let's hope we follow a similar pattern and we ride this out to the best of our ability.
Okay. Thank you. And uh, Mr. Superintendent, um, when we created the, the hybrid, uh, the four, the four cohorts for uh, um, then to go back to school, uh, the DESC, Commissioner Riley, he um, he pretty much set out a policy, or maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, that uh, it was, and I think talking with you, it was, what was it, at eight percent for four consecutive weeks in the red?
Yeah, that was uh, not Commissioner Riley, that was uh, DPH.
The governor?
That was DPH.
Okay.
Yeah, DPH set a target at the time for eight percent spread rate around a, but that wasn't to close schools. That was an indicator-
No, I didn't say that. I didn't say that.
Okay.
Um, I'm asking you, was it eight percent, correct?
I know. Uh, yeah, that was, that, eight percent was at the, at the time, the uh, DPH uh, determined uh, would be the uh, indicator to being red. But they, they just came out Friday and changed that metric. So there was, I don't know, a hundred and twenty districts in the red on Thursday and on Friday, there's only sixteen. We're one of them.
Okay. And I, I'm sorry, Tom, I, I don't, I'm not hearing you too good and I don't know if you're hearing me too good. Um, so uh, what, can you explain to the public uh, the change in the metrics that they just, uh, that they did on Friday?
I gotta doctorate, Paul, but not that kind of doctorate. Uh, you gotta be a statistician to know that one. Uh, I did pass stats-
No, I'm, I'm talking about as far as loosening up any kind of restrictions that we should be made aware of.
Well, no, I mean, the, the, what they changed was they looked at multiple factors and it, it was a spread rate based on age, based on the overall spread rate. They averaged all this stuff through and they came up with this new average daily uh, incident rate. They also, instead of looking at everyone per a hundred thousand, you get a town like Goshen that's got, I don't know, ten people. Uh, if they had one case, they'd be at ten percent, right? So they've changed how uh, those metrics are, how they're reported. It came out Friday, uh, you know, early evening, six, six o'clock or so, five or six o'clock Friday. Uh, we waited to get it and, and looked at what our rates were. We've definitely seen, if you look at it and track it with a um, a plot graph, it's uh, it's uh, it's definitely increased over the last uh, five weeks wherein this is the fifth week of the ye, of, of, of our red zone, if you will. Uh, and we'll wait to see what, what Thursdays look like. But you're right, when you look at the daily rate that comes out that you've seen, when you look at the numbers, they're very high Saturday, Sunday, today, they're down. If we get those numbers down in the twenties, uh, we get back to a place where we could be uh, much closer to eight percent and under eight than uh, than we are right now.
And what are we at right now?
We are at forty-one point eight percent.
So in the span of maybe like, I don't know, four or five weeks, like you just said, we were close to eight percent. We kinda hit the threshold of eight percent. And in the past four weeks, because of this uptick, we're now at forty-one percent.
Yeah, we've gone from uh, about seven point two percent to uh, forty-one point eight percent.
Okay. And I, and I, I heard you talking earlier about how the spread's not in the schools. Um, however, I mean, I don't know if that's a fair assessment because I know, I know there's not a, a really big increase in the schools and it's, it's in the city. However, that increase that we're seeing in the city, um, that you, I can pretty, I'm, I'll be pretty safe to assume that uh, the folks of those uh, sixty-six, uh, seventy-eight on the Sunday, sixty-six on a Saturday, and today on a Monday, forty-seven, have maybe children uh, that are, that are in, taking part in the hybrid. They might, the, the people that are maybe getting the uh, that are testing positive for the COVID-19, uh, have some family that might be uh, you know, affiliated with the schools, whether they're students, uh, teachers, parents, uh, custodians, whatever that is. So we just gotta keep an eye, and I, I know what, I know we are, uh, keeping a sharp eye on. I know, I have every confidence in Nurse Long, but I just wanted to, I just wanted to put that out there. It's, it's not that the um, you know, the spread isn't in the schools, um, but, but since this uptick, we've seen an uptick in the schools, wouldn't you say?
Uh, uh, very slight, we're administrative percentages, if you will. But, yep, and we're monitoring and we're tracking and as I said, kids are gonna get uh, COVID, um, and um, and, and that's a fact. And we're doing the best we can to mitigate.
Right. Um, also too, uh, I've, I've talked to a few parents, um, Mr. Superintendent, and um, a lot of them are asking me if they could uh, if, do they have an option, um, if they're, if they're nervous about their children? Um, if they have, do they have an option where they could go uh, you know, remote for the end of the year, till the end of the year and not, but also stay in the same class?
No.
Or is that not possible?
Not possible at all. It's, it's, it's so complicated, Paul. It's just, we, if, if you pull out of the in-person, you gotta go to the remote cohort because that's the only way I can cover um, uh, the courses. So, um, you know, I know, uh, you know, a parent was, wanted to go on vacation or something and realized, oh, my kid may, may be gone for a period of time. Will they be moved to cohort? We can work those things out, but if you want your kid to be remote, they go to the remote cohort. Uh, that's the best we can do, given, because I also have to put, that opens up a seat. I got another kid I can bring back. So in terms of keeping the teachers, it just doesn't work that way.
No, I, I told, I told the parents I'd asked that question to you tonight. Um, and is there, at, at any point, um, uh, Mr. Superintendent, uh, if, if these numbers continue to, you know, go on an uptick and um, will we, will we uh, look at or will we wait to uh, maybe what the DESC commissioner, we, uh, DESC commissioner or the governor, uh, and I don't want this, I want as many kids as we can to get back to school. But if these upticks continue, um, the, is there any threat of uh, the schools that are up to the, uh, the odd districts to go fully remote?
Well, so there's, there's two ways that that could happen. One, the governor could say, I'm announcing a government shutdown, school closure like he did in March. Uh, and the other way is that I would make that decision, uh, and then I would bring it forward to the committee, if you approve the policy tonight, within forty-eight hours uh, of making that decision. And that decision would be uh, made only because of uh, upticks uh, and numbers. But I will say that I've, I've made that decision several times on smaller cases. So looking at closing a school, closing a classroom, et cetera, based on uh, extenuating circumstances. So in terms of going for, excuse me, fully remote, and I think if, if you watched, I can send another article on it, I guess, but the, if you watch the governor's press conference on Friday, uh, he was adamant that he was not going to be making any uh, full remote. Um, he wants more kids in schools and he's, he was pretty, quite frankly, angry at many of the districts that were in like yellow or green, uh, that were still-
Fully remote.
Not offering uh, uh, that option. It's, you know, it's the last resort for us to go uh, full remote. But, but again, you're right. If the numbers still continue to go up, I gotta make a hard decision and, and uh, then involve the uh, committee and the long-term nature of said decision.
Yeah, and, and I will say this again to you, Superintendent. I thought you did put a very good plan, uh, put forth to us, uh, for the school committee, uh, for the four cohorts, uh, the two hybrid, uh, the one fully remote as when the uh, and I think cohort A is the uh, you know, special um, ed kid, ed children. Uh, I think that is the best, absolutely best way to go. It gives the uh, the parents the option. Um, and I do believe in the kid and children going into this classroom because I don't think there's any other kind of uh, learning that they can, uh- think there's any other kind of, uh, learning that they can, you know, take fully advantage of it. Um, but, you know, this, uh, this is a, you know, a pandemic that no one expected, and, um, I, I, I just wanted to get it all out there and maybe ask these questions to you and to everything, the Nurse, uh, Nurse Long, uh, because it's obviously a concern with a lot of people, with us, as a school committee, uh, with yourself, the mayor. Um, so with that, I thank you for the answers, and I'll try to get back on, on Zoom right now. Thank you.
Mr. Costa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so a couple of things, and I'm not going to rehash attendance rates and how we'll handle that, and, and Mr. Corey's correct that, you know, 86%, you know, 14% of students not being there is, you know, about 490 students of the 3,500. So it, it is a significant number. And to Mr. Hart's point, if, if we are seeing this sort of community transmission of cases, you know, if students are close contacts or they're individuals who are themselves testing, then obviously the protocol is that they, they quarantine. And so, uh, and we just heard you can't test out of quarantine. So my hope is that, uh, people know that information. Uh, and to that point, me, uh, Ms. Larrabee raised the issue about, you know, whether parents are asking how to handle situations when their students may be symptomatic or maybe have one symptom. Um, and, and, you know, I, I would hope that in this day and age with, you know, the amount of tweets that we put out in social media that we have access to, that is it possible for the district to spell out for parents what the protocols are if your child is symptomatic? What that means? What does it mean if my, if I'm a close contact? What are the parameters for each of those? Because I think what's happening, and I may be wrong, but I quite frankly don't think that some parents understand, if my student has symptoms, does that mean they stay home? They don't stay home? If I get a test, can I go back? Can they not go back? Can they test out of quarantine?
Front page of a...
I, I really think there's such a level of confusion out there that some parents just say, I don't know, so you're just going to go to school? Or, or you're just going to resume your normal activity and, and when they should be quarantined. And so I think if we can message that in a way where parents know there's a checklist, if my student has symptoms and a nurse or, or even if the nurse, they haven't contacted the nurse, if my child wakes up and they got a runny nose or a headache, what should I be doing? And, and you outlined, Ms. Long, um, very specifically and detailed, the three options on, on how, if they're symptomatic, how they would get back into the classrooms. I'm not so sure that, that parents or all parents know that.
We...
And so how can we?
We have, we have a checklist in three languages. We've had it posted on the school websites. We have sent them home. If we do send a student home, we send that checklist again with the options of, you know, what they need to do to come back. So they have all been sent home.
So I guess...
It's there.
And, and so maybe that speaks to why our transmission rate within schools is, is low, and I hope it stays that way, because maybe that message is getting out there. But maybe we can revisit that and send it out again and keep doing that on a, on a regular basis.
Yeah.
Because I just think that, that even for, for those of us who sort of live what this looks like, it's confusing. And, and so is it, you know, 10 days since my last symptom? Is it 10 days from a certain set date?
Right.
And without having that information or without taking those necessary precautions, because I'm uncertain, could exacerbate the situation either locally in, in, in the community or within our schools, so...
We have also seen, after we sent that out, we had a lot of parents calling to ask.
To clarify.
To clarify.
And, and I think that's great, and, and kudos to the parents who are doing that. Those are conscientious parents who have gotten the information, looking at it and saying, well, gee, I'm, I may have some additional questions now, so let me call. And, and I don't know if those calls are going directly to schools, if they're coming to a centralized location, but, you know, and, and again, not that we want to create a hotline, but if we had an individual who had that information with...
It goes to the school nurse.
Directly to the school.
Where the student, yes, it should go right to the school nurse, and they, we've had meetings with our local Board of Health, um, we're probably going to have another one soon, but they've all been, um, trained on what to say, what to do.
With the protocol.
So it should go right to the school. If any parents have any questions about, or any clarification is needed for symptoms they're having, they should contact their school nurse.
I just think the more we can continue to, and repetition is the key with a lot of the stuff, because you may have, in the first wave of notifications, informed and educated X percentage of parents, and, and so maybe we didn't get X percentage of parents that round, but if we do it repetitive, we keep doing it, my hope is that as long as the regs don't change, and they seem like, depending on what your, um, you know, motive is or intent is, sometimes they do change. And so, you know, maybe just the science is changing. So if we are going to change it from quarantine from 14 now to 10 days, because science says that there's a small percentage of people who are contagious after 10 days, that's fine if science supports that. But if it's just that we want people back in circulation sooner, and the science doesn't support that, we'd hope that we wouldn't be that, that radical or that risky, if you will. Um, because you're right, science does say that right up until 14 days, you can still transmit it. That's why we have 14 days. So, um, you know, I think, again, the messaging, the repetitive nature of it, um, I'm glad to see we have it in multiple languages, because I think that's helpful from a, a community standpoint like ours here in the city, where we have, um, families who speak , uh, multiple languages and come from different backgrounds. But, you know, this is a balancing act, and, and it really is, in terms of, you know, educating the public and, and watching our numbers, and we've remained steadfast that we were gonna allow students to continue to come to school if they're safe. And I still, to this day, to today, based on the numbers feel, our schools are safe for students to be in. Um, but my fear is that we'll start trending in, in a direction that we're going to overburden, um, our ability to have students in buildings, because we have staff who are out, um, and have some other challenges. But I think we're doing well. Thank you. Uh, I, I wasn't aware that, um, that information was being messaged, but if we can continue maybe doing it on a regular basis and encouraging, uh, families, if you have questions and you're uncertain, the best thing to do would be to pick up the phone and dial the school number and ask to speak to the school nurse about some guidance and clarification, some education around what you should do with your child. Because I think the more people are aware of how to deal with it, the less you'll see students showing up at our doors that really should be either quarantined or should be home and waiting out some of the symptoms, uh, because we're going into cold and flu season, and there are going to be some students who are going to be sick, and, and they look like it's the virus and it may just be a, a regular cold.
I should also say too, that teachers have, have been really good about, um, picking up symptoms and sending them to the nurse too, because the nurses have talked to the teachers, and they know, they've been given a list of what to look for. So if a child comes in, you know, in the morning and they see something's not right, they, they send them right to the nurse.
Yeah, I just think my experience has been, and I've, I've heard some stories that shake my head and scratch my head and say, for someone who should have known you're positive, you shouldn't be out in public, or you shouldn't be in the workplace, and, and yet you hear stories of people who you're like, really? Like, it just blows my mind that, that people who you think would know have a total disregard for the fact that they're sick or that they've been in close contact with someone who has been, and it's been confirmed, and yet they're not following the, the directives or the guidelines in terms of quarantining. So the more we can get that information out to our parents and reiterate it, I think the better we'll be, um, through this process. But thank you, Ms. Long, and, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, I yield.
Uh, nothing further? Thank you. Next item up, 11.4 is a discussion and vote to approve a second reading in consideration of new policies in four public schools as referred by the Policy Subcommittee and presented by Dr. Matthew Malone.
So, um, this is, uh, the second read of the policies that, uh, we brought forward from the Subcommittee, uh, that we discussed at the last meeting, with the addition of on the the sec, the third page, uh, in that section of your binder, uh, under the remote learning policy, uh, there is the section on attendance and the section on camera use. Mr. Corey brought up attendance, and I know we discussed camera use earlier. This language is, uh, adopted from, uh, uh, Brockton Public Schools. Uh, we read it, we edited it. Uh, I'm encouraging you kindly, uh, to accept, uh, all of this, uh, tonight as is.
Motion approved?
Second.
Uh, I, I got, I got a motion and a second, but I do have a question. What does this mean? Students will be asked to turn their cameras on briefly, I don't know how long that is, while teachers take attendance at the beginning of the school day and at the end of each class, taking our content time. Students will not be mandated to keep their cameras on. Why not?
Because there was, uh, worry about litigation around, uh, essentially First Amendment rights, if you look at someone's home, there was concerns about, uh, looking at their homes and what that would mean around, um, speech.
Has there been any cases like that that you could cite?
I can't cite any, but that's why I can, I can tell you why, that they said we weren't going to mandate the use of cameras during the whole class.
Who told you that?
Me talking to the other superintendents. So this language, I, I didn't edit any language. This is the exact language that was adopted from Brockton. So the question, if you're asking, if you're asking...
Brockton wrote that because of what happened in Fall River. If you read the article, they, uh, they said...
No, they had this already. They already adopted this. They adopted this last summer. So this, so you know.
Well, they, they did say, they did refer to us when they said they do not want two things.
They did, right, because I, I mean, and I talked to the, I, there's a group of superintendents, about eight of them, I talked to on a daily basis about all of these issues, and not many places even have a, a camera policy because of that factor of invasion of privacy, which was, I believe it was, correct me if I'm wrong, was that under the First Amendment of speech with the privacy? Or was that a different amendment? I, my head's combalated right now. But it was a question of, uh, what that would mean. So they wanted for every student to each, at least have eyes on at least twice during that class period.
Well, I don't know. Okay, Mr. Costa?
I, I mean, I'll support it, because it gives us more access to our students than we have now. Now we're not requiring them at all. So whether it's in, in the beginning of the, the session and at the end, or whether they keep their cameras on the entire time and we let someone go ahead and challenge it, and we explain for safety reasons, that was the purpose, I mean, to me, this gets us to a place that we're not at right now.
Yes.
And, and we need to be better about putting eyes on our students, even if it is in the beginning and in the end.
We can always change.
Again, you know, if, if we're asking each, each member of this committee our individual preferences, certainly I'd want students to be engaged and on the camera the entire time. Now, we heard from Ms. Leecey that, you know, sometimes students will keep it on for the entire duration because of lag, and we experience it sometimes here in our own school committee meetings, where depending on the strength of the signal, it buffers and the, the signal drags, and so the students sort of coming in and out, and, and so maybe that's the reason why, um, you know, we wouldn't have it on all the time. But, um, I'm going to support this, because this gives us more access and eyes on students than we have currently. Whether we go back and, and ask for some legal opinion in terms of whether it violates anybody's rights under the Constitution or under the law, um, this committee could take action to do that and, and, and get that, uh, feedback and guidance. But I think for now, I think what's clear is that we, we don't have necessarily eyes on students, and I think we need, um, to tighten that up and, and have that. So I, I'm going to support this. I just asked that, I think this comes in by way of motion on, so I guess maybe I can ask through the chair, if this is a motion to approve this addition to the, to the plan, or is this being asked, are we being asked as a second read to adopt?
So Greg, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, it was through the chairman. It, it, to you or to whomever the chair determines has the answer.
So we, we've read the policy second time, you could do one of two things. You could have voted to approve, or you could waive your right for a second read on this addendum item, but...
Well, I just, I want to be clear on what the motion was, because I, I would ask the committee to consider waiving all readings on this particular amendment, because then it'd enact it right away, as opposed to, um, you know, adopting it, I guess, in its first read, because that's what's before us. But, um, I just procedurally want to enact it to give you in this district the ability to put eyes on students as it's, as it's outlined here. With that, I yield.
Yeah. Okay. Anything further? Um, well, we have a motion and a second. Now, I don't know if it's a motion. Kev?
Just on that, um, I agree with what Mr. Costa said. The, um, I want to say I read either somewhere in some kind of journal or whatever, that Google is trying to get a background?
Yes.
That can cover, you know, serve that, so...
Everyone would have a background, so you wouldn't have to see anything going on in people's houses.
Correct. So as part of this here, rather than have you come back to us, I'd like to make an amendment. One amendment would be to waive the, uh, all readings for those two new ones, but also subject to Google having a background, if that happens, then we should require it full time. You understand what I'm saying?
Second. Second amendment.
Thank you.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call Deb, please.
Mr. Higgin?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Very good.
Yes. Further on the motion, um, to approve the new policy for the time being, I think I got a motion and a second.
As a second read and enact it?
Yeah.
So move.
A second?
Second.
Second.
Want to give it a call, Deb, please?
Mr. Higgin?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Very good.
Yes. 11.6 is a discussion and vote to approve a job description for the Administrative Assistant for Operations and Finance, as presented by Ken Pacheco, Chief Operating Officer, and Kevin Almeida, Chief Financial Officer.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, but I'm hoping we'll have some further discussion on it. But motion to approve?
Second.
I'll second it.
I got a motion and a second, Deb. Anybody want to discuss it, or Mr. Costa?
If, if I can just ask, and I'm sure Mr. Pacheco was heading to the podium to do this, but to just give some background, um, you know, again, my concern with any new position such as this is that, one, it sounds like it's going to be utilized for both offices, and, you know, clearly I think there's a need, particularly, I'll speak to Mr. Pacheco, uh, this person's role under your, I guess, umbrella, and then also speak to how I support it from Mr. Almeida. And I know it's one position, it's going to be shared, um, but, you know, I think when you look at the number of capital improvements that are happening across the district, the number of dollars that are being spent, both in partnership with the state through MSBA and also the local dollars that are being, um, put into these projects, a, a lot of that requires your ability to get out and, and be boots on the ground, if you will, observing the work as it's going on. And so, you know, I know that this committee, and I'm sure the superintendent in, in your role asks a lot of administrative duties of you, um, I'm sure you're getting phone calls, emails, et cetera, et cetera, that you have to do that office work for, and, and I'm hoping that this individual will assist you with some of that. Um, you know, obviously you're still going to need to have that time in your office to do that, but I think this frees you up to be out there and, and observing this work that needs to be done in our schools. And certainly I'll be supportive of the position for, for those reasons and, and others as well. And, and Mr. Almeida, I think that, you know, there are times throughout the, the budget year, whether it's in preparation of the budget presentation, that someone like this, I think, could be helpful and assist you. Uh, the end of the year report, I know consumes a lot of your time, and so having somebody during those times of the year, and, and I'm sure there'll be others that you'll identify where you need, you need to be freed up to do some of that other work, and having someone you can count on, uh, someone confidentially that you can count on to assist you in that process, I think makes sense. Um, if it, this had come to us for a position for each of you, I, I think I'd be less inclined to support it, uh, but given that it's going to be a split, certainly the two of you can work out, uh, how that will work, um, I think it makes, it, it makes sense, and certainly I think it makes, it, it makes sense and certainly has my support. And I'd be asking my colleagues here tonight to consider not only what I've said, but I know you'll all have some questions as well. And, and once those are answered, I'm going to ask that the committee support this because I think it goes a long way to assisting two key roles within the ad building and, and for that, I, I certainly hope it passes tonight. But with that, I yield. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Tommy?
I'll be brief. I want to start off by saying thank you to both of you gentlemen. I, I never understood just how pressured those jobs are until I was on this side, you know? And with the amount of capital improvement going on in our district, very proud to see all of that. I drove by the Durfee High School project today and I, you know, it, it's, it's just made me very emotional at how, how beautiful it's coming along and driving by Watson School and seeing all of those great improvements to that building. So Candy, I've seen your desk. It's loaded with paperwork. Kevin, I've seen your desk. It's loaded with paperwork, you know? And I'm sure that this assistant will go a long way in helping to make your operations more efficient. My one question is, and, and I'm sure the money's been, you know, appropriated within our budget, you know, accordingly, will this assistant answer to, to you and like nobody else in the building, will, will they be dedicated to you, to you guys?
Yeah, so they would report to the two of them. They do a joint evaluation. That's their boss. It's a confidential assistant. But all the confidential assistants in the building, at times we all work together based on my needs across the district. But just as, you know, Megan, Megan and Laurie work downstairs, you know, in their role and Lisa works for Maria, they all have their own boss.
I ask that question in the spirit of just not being pulled in some direction.
Yeah, no, it's, so, I mean, we're, you know, we're pretty good at our offices doing the work they need done. But then if there is a district need, we're also really good at uniting forces if need be. I will say, one of the reasons why, you know, I was, I was very serious about the need here and why Mark's right, you know, we, we, we came together to do something that we thought that this, the committee could do, which is one position across two. No one understands the, the uptick in work from the state in both departments, one with all the building projects and the MSBA stuff, yeah. But also just the, you know, not only is, is Kevin the CFO, you know, in, in smaller districts, he's known as the business manager, meaning all of the purchasing, supply and all this stuff related. So there's a ton of work there. Sometimes fighting with the, when I'm behind their back, I want to give them the support that they need so they can be more efficient. And we pay people to come in and do overtime work just to do the paperwork processing with the MSBA, which is a, a ton of work and, you know, we've been doing without. So we, you know, I feel strongly that we'll be much more efficient and better able to, to even do more work than we're doing with, with this addition.
And, and again, I want to reiterate, I want to thank both you gentlemen for the high level of work that you bring into our four of the public schools. Thank you, I yield.
Anything further? Kev?
Just, I support this wholeheartedly. My only comment, and I've seen this happen over the years, I believe, as far as Mr. Pacheco is concerned, your position, I think, is, is doing way too many things for one person. And I think if, even when we get this, if we can get back to the real intent of the position and what it is, you know, you can only get stretched so thin before you start losing effectiveness or quality of your work and you're doing the best you can. But from one member, I can tell you, I think you're, you're spread way too thin. So if you can, through this, keep it up. But I, I just think it's a burnout type of situation where you can only do so much. So I do support it and I hope, wish you the best. Thank you, I yield.
Anything further? Mimi?
I also want to thank you for all your hard work, completely amazed by both of you and all your hard work all the time. But I do have one question. Is that going to be the uniform, what you guys are wearing right now? Did you call each other this morning?
That's a daily occurrence in our office.
But yes, again, very impressive. Thank you, and I am going to support this.
Roll call.
Roll call, please. Let's go.
Mr. Higgin?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mary Coogan.
Yep. Next item up is eleven point eight, a discussion and vote to approve the FY twenty-two budget calendar as presented by Kevin Almeida.
So what you have in front of you?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
And a motion and a second. Any discussion on the item? Kev?
So I'm assuming you're just going to go through what you gave us as very similar, I think, to prior years.
Yes.
When we look at the budget, I brought this up at the last meeting and I just want to, once again, respectfully ask that this committee at one of our future meetings has an agenda item related to internal fiscal controls of what we actually are doing with the FTEs. And we've gone over it. I don't want to rehash the whole thing. But I do think that what we, we're doing in practice between you and the superintendent is actually different than what our policy is. So I think we should have a meeting where we can get it all out there prior to the next budget cycle, so we're all on the same page. I'd like to ask the mayor to consider that with the superintendent and the vice chair in a future finance meeting. But I do support the calendar and hopefully we're going to, you know, have a better financial picture. But with that, I yield. Thank you.
I, I would just advise the committee to put that as a finance subcommittee meeting agenda item, not a whole committee agenda item, so there can be work done prior to any other discussion. It is a committee of a whole, so that meeting could be set before an upcoming school committee meeting. But to have it as an agenda item when there's actually a lot of work that has to be done, I think would be not as productive as, as putting it on the subcommittee, which is a committee of the whole. That's all.
I got a motion and a second.
Second.
Deb, please call the roll. On eleven point eight. Yep, go ahead.
Yes.
Mr. Higgin?
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mary Coogan.
Yep. Eleven point nine is a discussion and vote to approve the end of year report as presented by Kevin Almeida, Chief Financial Officer.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions for Kevin on the end of the year? Kevin Higgin, please.
So I, I see the report and it, I think I understand it for the most part, but the first line reads that FY twenty-one budgeted net school spending deficiency of 1.2 million. That's after all said and done. So this is the current budget we're in?
This is, this is where we stand. So, so, so for FY twenty, we ended at about 1.3 million dollars short. When you factor in everything that the city gave us for FY twenty-one, where we stand overall is we're short by just under 1.3 million. 1,274, 750.
So they're not, they're not added together there?
No, no, that's where we are right now. That's where we are now.
So I'm not, I'm not exactly sure how that, the bottom part of this would, would go first. Is that why you got them together?
So the way it works is whatever the, whatever the, whatever the deficiency is in FY twenty carries over into FY twenty-one. And that's, this is where we currently stand when you factor in FY twenty and FY twenty-one. In total, that's where we stand for net school spending.
Increases it by 1.2.
Budget.
Right, so we're, we're short?
Yes. Yes.
Which we're not supposed to be, which.
Correct. And so, and so we, this is what's been submitted to the state. What I've provided to you in the documents that are here is an update showing you the, the reports, showing you the reconciliation, how I get to the 1.2 million dollars. And I've provided you with emails to the state in regards to assessments because what was included in the end of the year report assessments were not the updated assessments. And I've provided you with the updated assessments from the cherry sheets to give you the most accurate figure we have at this time. The DESC typically certifies the end of the year report sometime in the January, February timeframe with the most updated, updated figures at that time that they have. So I'll provide you a further update come February, come, come the January, February timeframe.
And how does that work for, when does that have to be fully budgeted from the city?
So I've, I've, I've come forward with what the shortfall is to you tonight. We've, I've, I've already spoken with Mary Sahadi as to what the shortfall is. She's in agreement with it as, as of this time. So the city can act at any time as they want. They can wait until the end of the year report is, is certified by the state. So it's really, you know, they have, they have to provide the money to us this fiscal year in order to meet their obligation.
So we got that letter last year in March, similar to what you're talking about?
Yes.
My concern is just that we go, if we get it too late, then we can't do anything with it. So along with that, I would like to, again, ask, I've asked in June, I asked in October, September, that we need to look at creating that special ed reserve account that the state through the municipal relief, whatever they call it, I'm not sure what, so that we can have a mechanism to carry over monies without having to go through this, you know, thing at the end of the year without, and I'm not suggesting that we do it. All I'm suggesting is that we put it on our table to see what is the mechanism for it. If it was in the municipal relief bill for a reason, why don't we just do it so that if we did get 1.2 million in March or April, we wouldn't have to be figuring out what to do. We need to be prepared for twenty-one, twenty-two, which is going to be a bad year. So I, I, I am a little bit confused on some of this stuff still, but I, I think the end of result is what you said. I am going to ask you offline about the 1.7 that we prepaid and how that figured in because that just was totally confusing, but I trust that you got it. So with that, I yield, but I ask that we continue the dialogue and I'll call you offline.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
No problem.
Mr. Costa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Ms. Almeida, just so that, I guess we're all clear, the one point, almost 1.3 million dollars is a shortfall from FY twenty.
Yes.
So by process, it rolls into FY twenty-one, changes our net school spending number by that number. So now it increases it. And so now we're looking at being budgeted for a hundred percent in addition to knowing what our shortfall was in twenty. So right now it's 1.3. However, depending on, again, all the things that fluctuate within a fiscal year, including health insurance, that could also increase. It's not going to go lower than 1.3 because we, we closed our books and we know that was tacked on to twenty-one.
Correct.
What I'm saying is, so it's not going to go any lower than 1.3, but could actually go higher depending on how this year unfolds.
Yes.
So with that said, I'm glad you had the conversation with Ms. Sahadi because obviously I think that's information that's going to eventually need to be shared via the mayor's office down to the council for an appropriation to make good on the shortfall from twenty in this fiscal year. How that's addressed, we'll leave that for the discussions on the city side. What I would ask though, because it would impact that number increasing in this fiscal year, is again, that, that communication, whether you want to do it quarterly or however it wants to be done, between you and Ms. Sahadi with respect to health insurance. Because that seems to be the one that certainly, depending on claims, equates to a, a large majority of what we're seeing here as, as shortfall in twenty. So just so there are no, you know, surprises, I guess, if you will, it's not going to be lower than 1.3 because that way we close the books, we know that. However, depending on how quickly or not we're spending health insurance in twenty-one could add to that total. And so I'd like those conversations to be had. Whether it needs a motion or not, I, I don't know. I think just as a matter of practice, you should be communicating with Ms. Sahadi on the city side so that she's aware of what our numbers look like in comparison to what hers look like, because sometimes they need to be reconciled. I get that. There are sometimes differences between what her numbers look like and what ours do. But in addition to that, I think the administration goes down to the council, I don't know if it's quarterly, and, and shares with them the financial outlook. So I'd like that information also, if you can convey that to Ms. Sahadi, whether she chooses to do it or not. That's entirely up to her. It's a different department, different entity. But I think that's important information also to be sharing in her report to the council where she sees those health insurance numbers. Because ultimately, if they're short again in twenty-one, there's going to be another recommendation. It has to go to the council to come up with money on how to rectify that, so.
And, and just, just so you know, we've, last few months, we, I've shared, I've shared the report with Mary and we've had some discussions along the way. So it's, there is communication going back and forth.
And, and I can't say that that's been the case going, you know, in, in, in the past. I, I think that's improved and it needs to continue that way, I guess, if you will. Because at the end of the day, no one should be sitting in their offices with information that the other doesn't have. We're one city and, and we should, there should be no surprises when it comes to these discussions. And I'm hoping we're going to get to a day where you can stand there and say, I spoke to Ms. Sahadi and she's absolutely in agreement with my numbers and her numbers look the same. And we're getting close. We're getting there. We, we think we've come to that point, but it takes a little longer. Usually by the time the end of the year rolls around, we get. I was shocked to see that you said when you talked to her that she was in agreement that that's the number because we were quite a ways off leading up until the end of the year, so we're there.
We're very high tech.
And I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. So I'm, I'm just glad that, that the communication's happening because these are taxpayer dollars and, and ultimately the decisions that are made affects both the school side and the city side. So keep that work up, Ms. Almeida, and, and with that, I yield, Mr. Chairman.
So we have a, a motion and a second. Is it, is it eleven point nine or ten?
Nine.
Nine, okay. A motion and a second on eleven point nine. Call the roll, please, Deb.
Mr. Higgin?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mary Coogan.
Yes. Eleven point ten is a discussion and vote to approve the year-to-date budget report as presented by Kevin Almeida, again, Chief Financial Officer. Do I have a motion and a second?
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Kev?
I think we received it, but I'm not sure if, on the professional salary, so I asked this question at the last meeting of if we paid everyone what's currently their salary, no increases or anything, what was left over in each of those lines?
Yep. It's about 200,000. That's what I'd, that's what I'd sent to you. In the professionals, that one professional salaries line, yes.
And that's with if we paid everyone?
Yes.
Their current rate, their current wage?
Yes.
So we, I think that might be low. Just my own, my own gut tells me that. But if you could take a look at that, the reason why I'm asking is it's similar to the conversation we had before. It's just an important number to figure to see what the, the gap is and where we're spending it. So is there any deficiencies? Anything that you?
Not that I'm aware of as of right now.
With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thanks, Kev. I have a motion and a second on eleven point ten. Thanks, Kev. I have a motion and a second on 11.10. Could you please call the roll, Deb?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mary Cogan?
Yes. The next four items are informational. 12.1, retirements. 12.2 are resignations. 12.3 are appointments, and regretfully, 12.4, the people that have passed away.
Motion to accept and place on file, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mary Cogan?
Yes. New business, 18.1, Mr. Malone?
There was one item.
I'll go ahead. After you can tell, I'll go.
Okay.
Just one item, a point of information for the committee. I did not know prior to the setting of the agenda, our current MOU with the Forest Police Department on the SROs, the police have asked for an updating, a signing of the committee, a new signing with no language changes, just so we get to 2020 date, part of their procedural part. So I'll be bringing that forward to the committee at the next meeting. Again, no changes, same document, asking for approval that says adopted by the school committee on a date in December.
Okay. Mr., Kev?
Just on that particular issue, I think in the past, there's been discussions relative to whether the standard operating procedure and the MOU were in agreement, and there's some sections in there that I had met with people in the prior chief, and so whatever they are going to agree to, I think we need to look at it to make sure that it's all, that they're speaking the same language. That's all. So if you could just take a peek at that before coming to us, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Just get us all a copy.
Yep, I'll get it on Friday's email.
Mr. Hart?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to bring up, I met with Mr. Fiola, Kent Fiola, probably about four, three and a half, four weeks ago, and I was curious about the classrooms that he had in his building that are available. And I know that we obviously need, or, you know, need more classroom space. I'm sorry, something, hello?
No one said anything, Paul.
Can you hear me? I thought someone was talking. I'm sorry. And I think, I mean, I think we should maybe at least look at the consideration of occupying those particular classrooms. I know when I was on the school committee before, we had RPA in that particular building, and other classrooms occupied that from our district. And I maybe would recommend that perhaps maybe the superintendent, the mayor, the vice chairman could maybe get together with Mr. Fiola and just see if there's something that we can do to occupy those particular classrooms for our children. I know through the, during this pandemic, it's difficult, and I don't know if there's money available. I do know that there's, you know, it could be money on our side, or maybe on the city side through Mr. Dion's office at the CDA, perhaps, or through the CARES Act, but I just wanted to bring that up. And I'm not saying we start this whole thing out to, you know, tomorrow, or next week, or a month, but I think maybe considering that we've always, we all took a pledge during the campaign to initiate a citywide pre-K program, and again, I'm not talking about this year, but I think that's something where we could work something out with Mr. Fiola in those, in that building. There's about 15 to 18 classrooms. So it's just a recommendation, and I think that, you know, we would, I know, I understand we have classrooms at People Inc. and the Boys Club, and I think this is additional space that we could use. So I'll yield. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, nothing further. Mr. Assad, is there a reason to go into executive session?
Yes, I would, Chairman, I would, each of all.
Please, please.
National Journal of Chapter 38, Section 2187, to review and improve the standard section of committee minutes for the ed program in 2020 regular meeting of the forest school day. Also, National Journal of Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy of the strength of the law with all professional employees, the forest school system, including coaches, tied up with teachers, and their certain occupational therapists and specialists of teaching and affection, representative of the forest educators association, as the chair of the group, and on the schedule may have a difference in that on a body position of committee. Also, National Journal of Chapter 38, Section 2182, to conduct strategy sections of preparation and negotiations, non-union personnel, and the cost of cost of negotiating personal footing, Jim Maderas, Assistant Director of Environmental Services, Stephen Anctil, Senior Technology Support Technician, Nancy Cardoza, Nutrition Field Supervisor, and Mary Correa, Nutrition Field Supervisor, Jessica Rhykos, Andy speaking, the manager specialist, A Center, and ESR, the community supervisor, Mary Cogan.
Is there a motion for executive session? Is there a motion? Anybody?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Hudson. Is there a second?
All seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Corey. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Mr. Agia? Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mary Cogan?
In recess. Back in session. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Har?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Larrabee?
Here.
Mary Cogan?
Here. Is there anything to come out of executive session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, several motions. First one would be the motion to approve the executive session committee minutes for October 19, 2020 of the regular meeting as amended.
Second.
Call the roll, Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mary Cogan?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the MOU, the memorandum of understanding between the Forest Educators Association and the Forest School Committee as negotiated.
Second.
A motion and a second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mary Cogan?
Yes.
Motion to approve the contract between Mr. Jim Maderas, Assistant Director of Environmental Services, and the Forest School Committee as negotiated.
Second.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mary Cogan?
Yes.
Motion to approve the contract between Mr. Stephen Anctil, Senior Technology Support Technician, and the Forest School Committee as negotiated.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mary Cogan?
Yes.
Motion to approve the contract between Ms. Nancy Cardoza, Nutrition Field Supervisor, and the Forest School Committee as negotiated.
Second.
Deb?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mary Cogan?
Yes.
Motion to approve the contract between Ms. Diane Correa, Nutrition Field Supervisor, and the Forest School Committee as negotiated.
Second.
Motion and a second. Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?